All right, welcome everyone on this rainy night, a warm night. It's, gosh, I think the weather, I just hope it stays this way, right? I know, but it'll be sixty-five by Saturday. We have that to look forward to. So, welcome everyone, so let's stand for a pledge of allegiance. A pledge of allegiance to the flag. All right, so we have one little thing that we need to do first. We have a little bit of a surprise. This is our interim manager's last meeting. And, so Art, we're gonna, we're gonna miss you. There's an assortment of things that Dana picked up from our village. Unfortunately, I don't think there's any. But I just want to thank you for, you know, for the service you gave us. How many months has it been? Six?
Six and a half.
Six and a half, but who's counting, right?
Seven thousand, four hundred and seventy-three minutes.
But sincerely, thank you. But just thank you very much.
You can say whatever you want.
Goodbye. No, thank you all very much. It's really been a pleasure. Long Grove's been a great team, great staff, great elected officials. I enjoy everything about being here. It's gonna be hard to leave. There's so much going on, being a part of things. I really do thank you very much. This is really a total surprise. Thank you very much. And I'm looking forward, you know, the new manager is gonna be a great person too, and I'll be here to, you know, help if he needs a phone call or whatever else. But again, thank you all very much, and, you know, God bless.
Yeah, I really appreciate you stepping up.
Oh, Jeff's on, okay, good. So Jeff's here. So we're gonna have a space there. We have the homeowners associations, and Bobby, you're here representing Creekside. Anything bring before the board?
One thing, and I'm glad that the Creekside here is beating on Indian Creek. It's gotten a little bit aggressive, and we need to start taking a look at it. And then, everybody's very appreciative that we have a new road. That's a nice thing, so everybody's happy. But several people mentioned that I'm in Creekside.
All right. Keith, you heard that, right? Yeah. Now, there is gonna be a big traffic control measure put in during the summer. There's a culvert that's gonna get replaced, and the road's gonna be shut down. So that hopefully will.
Yeah, we're not replacing it.
No, no, it's hot on wood. Probably not, yeah, for a little bit anyway. Yeah, it's gonna be a total inconvenience, so. So that's it? Thank you. All right, so Eleonora Estates, Richard Eterno, are you here online anywhere? Okay, if not.
Richard's no longer president. My name is Jeff Dowd from Eleonora Estates.
Thanks for being online, okay.
Six eight nine zero, September Boulevard, is my address. As far as our subdivision, the only issue we have right now is our, we have a pond, detention pond, that we're just trying to resolve some drainage issues with, that, that we're working with Lake County Stormwater Management with. And Jeff Perry's.
Yeah, that's the one, it was draining into the railroad tracks, the Canadian National Railroad tracks, right? Is that it? Is that the?
Yeah.
You were trying, yeah.
I'm sorry, go ahead.
No, go ahead, I'm sorry.
What I was saying, I got a party dog there. What I was saying is, then it further drains from our subdivision down into an area over there, an unincorporated Mundaline. And it follows the normal, the normal drain pipe there, but that drain pipe is crushed. And so we have to get that replaced in order to help out the railroad. And I think the railroad is submitting plans to go ahead and fix the drainage pipe as it comes through, across the road into us, so that, that will create some additional drainage issues for us.
And Jeff, you're helping out, you're here, Jeff Perry?
Yeah, yeah, I'm here, and this is the subdivision, if you remember, I don't know, maybe about eighteen months ago, the village authorized us to help get a grant through the Lake County Stormwater Management Commission. The subdivision has the grant and has it extended. And I know Jeff and his fellow owners, they're looking at their options to make sure that the drainage is repaired and the water level in the pond, you know, maintains its level and doesn't create any other issues for the subdivision. Just one other thing, Jeff, just to clarify, Lake County Stormwater Management has issued a permit for the railroad to replace the drain pipe under their, under the railroad tracks. And the railroad is making plans to do that project in the near future. I don't have a schedule for that yet, but as soon as I know that, I'll either let you or Sadaria know.
Fantastic. Thank you, Jeff.
Jeff Perry, thank you and for helping out. And Jeff Dowd, do you have anything else for us?
Not at this time.
You'll be impacted by the closure on Indian Creek as well, right?
That is correct, yeah. That won't be fun.
No, I can imagine, so you're, yeah, I think we're all up north are gonna feel the impacts of that one. All right, well, thank you for being here, and thank you for volunteering as HOA president. And there's a little bit of thunder going on right now. From Bridlewood, Joel Polokov, is that right? Yep. Good, how are you?
So, my name's Joel Polokov, I'm the president of the Fire Department Association. I have a colleague with me, Steve Bernstein. Got two questions. Number one, we'd like to get an update from the fire department on what's going on with that resolution that was passed a couple of months ago, and what the plan is on that, and what is gonna happen. Number two, I've got no information from Lake County on what Lake County plans to do and what's been approved by the village relative to landscaping the berm on most sides of the entryway, and in fact, what they're planning doing on the entryway. Trees are dead, the pavement is ruined by all their construction materials, and I have no idea what they plan on doing for re-landscaping that thing. I've seen no plan, I've seen nothing. All I get from them is updates with the gas lines, sewer lines, see nothing on the update. The homeowners pay a lot of money to maintain that entryway. They get a little upset because that money is going to maintain the entryway, because in that entryway, as people come in and they're looking at buying houses there, they see the entryway, it looks like crap, right? So if I can get a plan from the village on what Lake County Department of Transportation care all this stuff, that would be ideal. And Steve has an issue with it.
Okay, we, so we, so let's stop on two, and then we'll go back to the third one. So the, let's start with the one you just talked about. Jeff, do you have any information on the restoral on Apocicic Road? You know, what they're gonna do with landscaping that's been damaged and so forth?
I don't. I can follow up with the county tomorrow, though.
Okay, we'll follow up with, with you on that. Find out what they're gonna.
I'd like to see a plan, and I'm opposed to fixing it.
Yeah, and.
There's three beds and a pavement is ruined.
Yeah, so we'll, we'll follow up with you on that, right? So, and then the second thing was on the fire department, before we go there. It's, you signed the resolution, right? So, you have not, okay, got it, so still pending? Okay.
We want that point number three.
Yeah, please not point number three, thank you.
One of the, both in contention with all the area residents, I think it's being addressed tonight with the mulch company. I just had a question. I didn't see anything in that ordinance being adopted to address the extreme frequency of trucks and semi-trucks driving in and out multiple times a day and conducting business in a residential area. I don't know if that's something that is legal or not, or if there's a resolution somewhere else in code that I don't know of. But that's just another.
Yeah, this property should be, is R2, this guy's operating a business there. And as everybody knows here, there are semi-trailers going out there daily. He's repairing the road, and he's going in and out of that area with semi-trucks loaded with mulch that he's delivering off in Milwaukee. And if he's putting a new road in there on Apocicic, which is causing us all these headaches, causing us all these headaches, this guy's gonna ruin the road in one year. I don't know how a business got into an R2 area to deliver mulch. This is R2, not a business area. I don't know how it got voted in. It shouldn't be there. Somebody needs to resolve this.
Vic, do you wanna just take that, because there's a court order allowing him to do it, right?
This is something that had previously been litigated, and the court, under the regulations that are currently in place, identified that use as being an allowable agricultural use. Though we don't agree with it, that's still the governing rule. Now, one of the things, as noted earlier, is that tonight we have on the agenda an ordinance that will affect the use of mulching activities and composting activities within the village. And the only way that something as extensive as that would be able to occur is if they get a special use permit from the village for a particular type of use, which they do not have. And the ordinance does have a transition period, so it's not gonna be snap of the fingers effective. But by the end of this, call it the, the summer season, I think it's October thirty-first in the draft ordinance, they will have to come into compliance by either reducing the mulching and composting, and it's a fairly constrained area. You know, you won't, it's, under the draft ordinance, it's not something that you would need a semi-trailer truck for. Or they would have to get special approval from the village, which they have not to this point sought.
So, and then on October thirty-first, right, the ordinance takes place. What I, what Steve and I talked about is twenty yards, no more than twenty yards of mulch. This guy's doing way more than twenty yards. It's gonna come to the village, what's the village gonna do?
Well, if, if he were.
That's his business. He can't make business, he can't do business selling twenty yards of mulch. He's got mountains up there.
Right, he's gonna have to find another place to do that. Again, that's presuming that the ordinance is enacted. I believe it's R1, but whichever one it is, it's not allowed.
R3, I think it's R3.
It may, it may, I, it's a residential district, it's not allowed there, whichever one of the residential districts is located.
Please. Please. You want tater tots?
Hey, hey Jeff, we can hear you. I'd like those tater tots, too. So your wife, we, go ahead, I'm sorry.
When this road construction is done, which will be after October thirty-first, something happens, and he continues to drive these semi-trucks down Apocicic Road, either east or west, that whole construction project will be ruined. But the, the, the road is not built for those types of trucks going in and out every day.
Well, trying to, trying to address it, so we'll see where we, where it goes. Thank you, thanks for your comments. Thanks for being here tonight. Okay, time for public comment. Is there anyone in the room that has public comment? Oh god, everyone's, hold on a second. Go ahead.
My name is Brian Bott, five two six two Hilltop in Briarcrest. I won't take more time, but my property is directly adjacent to the mulch operation. So everyone could see the giant thirty-foot pile of wood. You're welcome to come and check out my property and see what it looks like.
What's the number?
Five two six two Hilltop. And I'm just here, hopefully you support the endorsement, the ordinance, and you get a pass, because we are negatively impacted by it, and so many reasons, as you said. The smell also is something, the noise is another issue that we've noticed in community of not actually following rumors of ocean compliance, of muffles on machines, constant noise, as well as blowing wood chips and dirt that land on our property. So, I'll leave it there, but I hopefully you all support the ordinance.
I know exactly what you're talking about. Go ahead, Jeff.
Jeff Wilson, Briarcrest Homeowners Association President. I spoke about this on previous occasions when I was here, because Brian Bott was, explained the problem he had. He says, if I had known that operation was gonna be the one that bought my home. I've heard with other homeowners who have pools in the area, and the blowing dust just covers everything on their backyard and their pools, all their, you know, outdoor furniture and everything. They can't keep their windows, they can't open windows because it keeps falling in even through screen. So, just wanna reiterate what Brian had said, it is a nuisance in capital letters. And I'm absolutely happy to see that, I was actually gonna call Billson Park hard about this, but I knew he had, you know, all kinds of things on the plate. And then when I saw this ordinance coming up, I said, well, this was my opportunity. So, I will leave it at that. I support the ordinance as well. I know that the owner there will have to talk over to the steward or move somewhere else.
Yep, we'll see where this goes, but trying to, trying to do something anyway, so, go ahead.
I'll be quick. I'm two lots, Larry Ross, fifty-two sixty Hilltop. I'm two lots, I'm next to Brian there, two lots away from that. And over the last seven oh how many years now, he's been there, but it's just, it's getting worse. And I'm dithering the same thing as far as smell, dust, noise. Don't even enjoy going on my deck anymore in the bathroom.
I, I don't tell anyone, I'm just telling everyone on the recording. I did walk that property for the fire station, so I know exactly what you're talking about. And the pile that's there right now is unbelievably big, that one pile, it's huge. All right, I hope not, but there's the fire department here to put it out, so they're on alert, so.
And that was the concern, is that it's starting to combust.
Right.
It's right next to Brian's house.
Right.
I mean, Brian's house.
What happens legally if they are not compliant? I saw that there's fine potential or civil litigation that could happen. What actually, if they choose not to comply, is something that they can just absorb at the cost of business and pass that on to their customers by mulch fielding?
Well, there are a variety of options. Usually we start with warnings and then ticketing. If need be, we can seek judicial intervention in terms of some kind of injunction that would prevent that from continuing.
You know, ticketing, a hundred and fifty dollars a day type of a thing?
Well, I, I believe there's a maximum of seven hundred and fifty dollars a day. And so that would, that would be the notion of it. And in fact, there may be multiple violations within this new ordinance if it's too close and too tall and too big. Each of those would be separate violations.
And we have our village prosecutor here listening to all this, so, he's taking notes, so. Thank you. Jane?
Yeah, a couple things. We came through the bridge. Is there any planning points to fix the hit and run on the bridge?
Let's see, Jeff, who's got that one? Jeff Perry, do you have that?
Yeah, Carmichael is, is under contract to fix that. They haven't given me their schedule yet, but they're probably, and just to kind of jump ahead maybe just a minute, they're also gonna be doing the piers or the footings for the Ruth barn relocation. So we're getting a schedule, and they're probably gonna do both things next week, I think. So, as I hear more from that, I'll, I'll let everyone know.
Thank you.
The only other thing I have is just an FYI of the ordinance. So, the third grade teacher from Killdeer Country, the school approached me, and we will be doing a tour of the third graders, all the third graders going through the school and the barn, and that will be going on Tuesday and Wednesday of next week. So I guess that they have ignored the DDR, evidence-based recordings that shut us off, and hopefully we can hopefully do some of those tours on the early days. We're looking forward to it.
Excellent, excellent.
And can we maybe use this, did you have a bathroom?
No, I didn't, I haven't found a village yet.
In case it is cold that day, we've got two classes coming in, and we're gonna switch on a school through the barn. Can we come in here and warm up, you know, if the kids need it? We're not counting on bathroom breaks.
Yeah, we have a barn and no bathrooms.
Yeah.
No bathrooms.
There's an outhouse next to the school. There is an outhouse. They'll love it. All right, so yeah, so shouldn't be a problem here. Dana, you heard that too, right? So, yeah, okay.
Yeah, I've, I've multiple warned them, there is no public bathroom in this building. So that, I mean, you had twenty-two kids each class, I can't imagine trying to run into the bathroom. That's not gonna happen, I just said no, so.
All right, we'll see how that works out, but thank you. Yeah.
Well, hopefully, well, we got a rainy day, we got a rainy day, yeah, so.
Okay, so the thunder came, and Brian, do you have a comment for us?
I do, so, two things. You guys, I put on your desk some documents, if you guys have any questions, we'll all read it. So, at a, we had a line or a call to, seven years ago, we started the process to do monuments to say, welcome to the store downtown Long Grove. And up to this whole process, we went through the architectural review, went through this whole process to find out the county was going to do the streetscape in downtown, so everything got put on hold. Well, now that we're finally back to the point where at the downtown, we're financially in a better position coming off COVID, we brought this topic back up so we can create the entry point for the downtown. So there's gonna be four entry points, and also a sign at the Cover Bridge Park. This, we took to the architectural commission tomorrow, yesterday, and they loved it, they approved it. Obviously, we're gonna make some font changes and some color changes just to make sure we mimic the downtown as far as the village design. But what we tried to do is create something that looked and felt like the downtown was supposed to. It's IDOT meets IDOT guidelines, what we're asking for. Because again, this was gonna be a partnership seven years ago with us as a downtown and the village. We cannot apply for permits for IDOT, the village is the only one that can apply for it. We're funding it, we just need you guys to assist on the permitting and the assistance there. So, obviously, this wasn't an agenda item today, we just wanted to get this in front of you so you can see it, but we're asking that you guys can utilize Jeff Perry and your team to start the process, and we can get this up hopefully by midsummer, end of summer. And these will be our entry points, this twenty-two and Old Henry. This will be at Old Henry and Old Fifty-three. Yeah, so instead of our nice realtor-looking sign that's halfway down, this would replace them, as well as that, we're looking at the Sunset entrance and the Robert Parker, as well as Robert Parker and Old Fifty-three. And then we'll have another one that will mimic this, that will say, simple parking lot, as well as the businesses there. When you look at this, you see these big white boxes, these big white boxes are actually magnetic boards that we can constantly change the signage and the messaging that we're providing the Long Grove.
Uh-oh.
Oh, is that tornado warning sign? I mean, it sounds.
Well, so the sheriff police just sent a warning, but it doesn't cover us, so just say no.
Right. It, the tornado warning goes just west of Palatine.
Right.
It's the eastward extent of it, so it's not overall. Very close, though.
What's the plan for like the?
Well, that's what we've been trying to figure out, what do we do here? There is a little basement.
We'll go downstairs.
All right, let's, keep going, so.
So we'll be able to change the messaging now, whether it's chocolate, best strawberry, if that's happy holidays, whatever we want. If the village has messaging, it's literally we can make it match and sticks to it, so it can constantly change and update it.
How thick was the lettering?
So you figure this is four feet by fifty-four inches? So it's a nice sign board, so it's gonna be proportionate, so it's not overpowering. But it's enough that if you're driving by, you can say, okay, this is going out.
Even if with it being in the box?
Correct, so if we have one box that shows the chocolate button logo, you're gonna know that it's chocolate. It's more for brand awareness. If it's holiday, it's just gonna say happy holidays. It just is a nice way to bring people into the right environment.
Okay, and the other signs, I assume, follow what's this?
The, all signs will have this look that we do as part of the downtown.
And then what color are you talking?
We're gonna mimic the sign that you have outside your entry point.
Would you make sure that that's the standard you wish to follow?
Again, that was original requirements that were brought to us seven years ago. If you guys as a town say, let's, let's look at that color, Steve, we will comply by it. We just wanted to be consistent with signage.
I suppose that we would look at the color?
You can do that.
I don't, I don't think what we have now is, is, I don't like it.
All I need is, what we're gonna be looking for is that we're all on the same page. Yes, we want the signage, let's start the IDOT process. We can change some fonts, we can change colors, that'd be, the permitting process is the most important piece.
For what it's worth? We are at budget time, and the city's call has gone out for what, what should we be putting in the budget? One of those items is rebranding signage. And just today, and I'm, I'm doing research, I, I don't know that it's going, that, that everybody's gonna say, you know, yeah, this is a priority, but let's do it. And our thinking was is, we've got a new village hall. So it's time for a refresh, you know, there are signs throughout town that used to be red, now they're pink, kinda thing. So, I just today emailed a gentleman who designs signs that incorporate logos with merchants. So, and I, I've seen a couple of things that he has done. I'll, I'll, we'll talk to you, but just, it's just FYI, it's, it's not in the budget. The board hasn't talked about it as a body, but. I think we've all kinda talked about it, not collectively, in, in, in a meeting kind of thing, but I think it's on everybody's mind. And we need to do this. It would be, I don't know if you're familiar with Skokie's logo. He, he, his job for Skokie has been to coordinate the festival signs and whatever throughout the village with that logo. So, just to me. So I'm, I'm looking at it, and it's not a thing that.
Even if that's the case, I still think we should go through the approval process, because IDOT could take some, some time. This is not a quick process, so that's gonna be the most time-consuming. This is obviously under the IDOT compliance as far as their guidelines, it's all breakaway. We chose some of the characteristics of the signs to mimic our downtown light pole. Again, it's all breakaway, I'm just asking for you guys to put some thought to it. We'll have more dialogue in weeks and months to serve. I just wanted to get it back on, on, on the table so we can discuss and communicate this.
It needs to be adjusted.
It'll look great, and coming into town, it'll be a nice entrance to downtown. Second item I have, I've got some other conversation later on, but.
We're not up for action tonight, I think this is introduction.
This is not FYI, again, we had a meeting with the architectural commission, they loved it, they approved it as it looked. So, these are the steps that have to be done. This was done seven years ago, I just wanted to bring it back to attention that we need to discuss it. The next time I come, it'll be for the approval, so we can start the process with, with village staff and engineers, if you guys approve it.
Yep, keep going.
Second item I have is, so at the downtown, we constantly have a dialogue with villages, with our municipalities, of how do we continue making this downtown safer? One of the suggestions that keep on coming up is type three barricade, as you guys are pretty familiar with this. The village owns eight pieces as we speak. As we're looking at it, we're trying to acquire another eight pieces. The cost of this is about twenty-six hundred dollars. We are wondering from a village perspective if they'd be willing for the village to co-share, we'll cover fifty percent of the cost, the village will cover fifty percent of the cost. We would store these at the same location at the original eight, they can be used anywhere for the village, as need be, but during the festivals, we'd also have some additional areas. This is good for our areas for pedestrian walkway, to give us complete guidance from a safety standpoint. I think as the sheriff here, they would probably appreciate this as well, because it gives us, it gives us define when cars are driving by. So we're just seeing if there's any way that we can co-share this, this twenty-six hundred dollars.
I, I don't think it's, I think it's a no-brainer, and especially because of what we could use of a one, and if, you know.
Paint a picture for me.
So like, these are used for the Royal Carnival, we literally accrue a lot, close down roads. When you come down Old Fifty-three to Robert Parker, we close that road. These are type three are what you wanna use because they're single barricade versus type one where they're, they're like a soft horse.
Oh, I see.
So this just defines it, so like, when we close the. Correct, there's not enough. Correct, there's not enough. So even like when we close the bridge, this is what they use when we have repairs of the bridge.
Right.
There are just not enough of them in the community.
Right.
So this would double what we currently have, so we would utilize them, and we obviously pay Elo when they come out to the festival, you know, to service that, but then it would give the village they have for any, any of that, that they have any, any road closures or street closures that need to happen.
Is that three of them?
There's gonna be eight more additional.
Eight, so they're a hundred and nine.
This is twenty-six hundred dollars, so we could cover roughly about thirteen hundred and some changes. We'd ask if you guys would be willing to cover thirteen hundred.
And as I understand it, the expense is something that the village manager can approve on his or her own. So, so if this is something you all wanna do, and I don't know where everyone's at, to, to give the village manager discretion to spend money on it.
I, I would, I would hope that he would do it, and not me.
I wanted to come here just to, to ask the question. I didn't wanna just do something and not ask.
You're good with it? Are you good with it?
Right, is that twenty-six hundred for the, for the whole bunch of them, or...
Here's the actual invoice, so you can have a copy for your readers.
So the village costs would be thirteen hundred and half of it.
Half of it.
So we'll order, we'll order them, and then I'll just submit the bill that we paid in voice for the mountain, and you can just reverse that if that's okay, or I can just ask them to send you a half the bill. I'll do whatever you guys say.
All right, so I, but I think you've got, you've got approval, plus you have the discretion. It's your own discretion to do it, so. Thank you, okay.
I believe we should be a lot more.
Nice try. Any other public comment online or in person?
Hi, at Mar, four three six one, Hopey Plain, representing Long Grove Regional, an acquisition zoning rezoning proposal at forty-three fifty-nine, and I brought twenty-two. Just wondering if there will be a village, a village planner's report tonight?
Yes.
Is that on it?
Yeah, she's here.
Okay.
Will it be an update related?
Yeah, we think it's probably not gonna be till April, because we still need to get more information in, but I'll let the village planner be more specific.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Anything else? If not, we'll do the public safety reports. We'll, we'll do the Lake County Sheriff first. Keith, can you give us an update on the thunderstorm?
I think it's southbound, but we're actually controlling them. How do you feel about the tornado? I think it's a warning. Gee, how do you get this to the lab?
So what do we do here, guys?
I don't know what I do. My thing, so if you're not on the basement or interior, we're looking for the building that are warning.
That's a, that's a warning.
Yeah.
So for what it's worth, I am looking at the Doppler radar. It does show rotation, but out by Galenquon, nowhere near us. Weather Service typically issues tornado warnings pretty far in advance of where the actual rotation is, so you have time to react. So it's not imminently a problem, but it's to our west and headed generally in this direction.
Do you have sirens at school, right? Sirens right at the school?
Yeah, well, there's a siren back this way, because I've heard it twice now, so.
Fire, ask the fire chief.
All right.
Another thing I'll say is the storm is weakening a little bit as it approaches. I've been watching it. It's still potent, but it's slightly weakening as it approaches.
Everything I've said there, we're not under, our area is not under the chain of warning, so that's, that's what's interesting.
If I could ask, if, if everything's gonna be okay, then we don't need to know what we would do if it wasn't going to be okay. But if it isn't okay, what are we going to do?
Yeah, downstairs. Well, we will help the chiefs and I, the lieutenant and I will help people get downstairs.
Is there enough space down there?
There's a basement.
Shoulder to shoulder. There's a crawl space at schoolhouse.
That's where, that's where you're going.
There is a basement.
I'm not clear.
Does the basement have a ladder? Is that...
I already crawled.
There's deep ladder.
Okay.
And I don't know, there's not that much space.
What would be the best corner that we're supposed to go to? Probably here and there?
And away from there's a, what would you call this old matches to get it, from the outside, the doors.
Yeah, around that back outside, yeah, there's...
Yeah, so those are on the downs, right, so then, probably closer this way.
We keep getting it. It says these dangerous storms will be near Hoffman Estates, Lake Zurich, Wakanda, Barrington, Hawthorne Woods, Inverness, Lake Barrington, Port Barrington around seven thirty, but it does not name Long Grove, so.
Sirens are going off in public areas.
Yeah, we're, we're in the middle of the tornado warning area.
Yeah, but we're not being named, so. I don't know, we can just continue the meeting. I don't know if it's gonna be any safer to get out of the car right now either, so.
It's arguably something we might want to talk about.
Yeah.
For the future.
Yeah.
Yeah, we're architects here. What I was gonna...
Where do you suggest we go?
Come on.
All right, let's keep, and if everyone wants to stay, we'll, we'll keep going. Go ahead.
Keep it brief. There's complaints about solicitors that came to our attention through the village. Might be something that you wanna look at rewording the ordinance. The ordinance currently allows registered solicitors to solicit in the village until nine P M., and suggestions have been made to maybe make that until sunset. So this coming year, nine o'clock, it starts, and people come knocking at your door. I know the county ordinance, Ron Incorporated, says Sunday set, so it might be something worth...
We did pull that guy's permit though.
Correct.
Yeah, so.
The ordinance is scheduled for upcoming meeting.
Yeah, to get it revised, so, thank you. Chief Segal.
Good evening.
Good evening.
President, take up. So, Chuck E., I'm here tonight to present our annual response report for twenty-twenty-two. So we each have a handout in front of you. I think we'll just go through the highlights and that, and then we can move on. So last year, we did have a slight decrease in the number of calls that, I won't say responded to, because we actually had an increase in our calls for service, but we entered into a new incident recording system last year, so we have a few incident reports that were combined, so that helped to actually cause a decrease in, in responses last year. So about a three percent with a total of one thousand eight hundred seventy-four incidents dropped a year. Our busiest month was July of last year with a hundred and seventy-two, and our three busiest times are at four P M., a hundred and twenty-five calls at that time, three o'clock in the morning with a hundred and twenty, and two o'clock in the afternoon with a hundred and fifteen. A lot of those were the busiest times, six hundred and ninety-seven calls between seven P M. and seven A M. And of the eighteen hundred seventy-four total calls, fifty, seven percent of those are for emergency medical service. In addition to that, in the pie chart that's shown there, eight percent of our calls are service calls. We go on mutual aid, ten percent or nineteen percent of the time. Confirmed fires, fortunately for us in our community, it's a very small number, one percent of our calls are actual fires. Seven percent are fire alarms, and eight percent investigation kind of a catch-all for service calls that we respond to. Anything else that doesn't fit into one of those categories. Of those, emergency medical service calls that we go to, forty-four percent of those are emergency homes. So that's where the majority of our, our calls are for EMS over any other type of call. And then of the patients that we've transported, sixty-four percent of those go to Northwest Community Hospital. We do have a wide reach for where we will transport to, Lake Forest, Lexington Brothers, Glenbrook, Highland Park, Lutheran General, Ann Bell, Good Shepherd, as well as Northwest We break down, internally, we, our shifts work twenty-four on, forty-eight off, so we have three shifts that work. We keep track of their incident response time and their turnout times, so we break those down a little bit just for our own internal, but also just to let public know that, you know, we're fairly consistent among all three shifts, so no matter who's working, you should get the same, same turnout time. From the time that a call comes to the station till the time we leave the station, our average time was fifty-nine seconds. Ninety percent of those times, or ninety percent of all turnout times fall within one minute and fifty seconds is our absolute top. Thirty-nine percent of the responses have a turnout time that might be hovering right around one minute, and we just keep an eye on that because our benchmark is one minute per turnout time. When we're dispatched, the first unit arrives on the scene five minutes and twenty seconds on the average, and ninety percent of all responses, which means within the fire district and outside into our automatic aid system, is eight minutes and forty-five seconds. Primarily, we respond within the fire protection district. Twenty-eight percent of the time, we are outside of the fire district. And our five cities that we responded the most to, obviously Long Grove is our biggest customer, one thousand eighty of our calls happen here, two hundred and twenty-four of those in Arlington Heights, hundred and forty-nine in Buffalo Grove, eighty-two in Lake Zurich, seventy-eight in Lincolnshire. That's our top five. Eighty-two percent of our incidents are in Lake County, and eighteen percent are in Cook County. Also on our little pie chart, as I said, we're part of a very robust automatic aid network, so that we dispatch to any incident that we're the closest to, regardless of jurisdiction, Maryland's boundaries. Our automatic, our automatic vehicle location system that are on our vehicles identifies where we are as far as closest to, so there's time, even when our ambulance is coming back from Northwest Community, they might be closer to heart attack and wheeling, which is one of the cases that we had last year, and they, they saved our homes' lives. But in our broader system that we have, a statewide mutual aid network, we go to places outside of Lake Forest, Lake County, and so last year, we went to Lakenham County and Kenosha County.
I have a question for you.
I'm sorry.
I have a question for you. You mentioned that the EMS calls, fifty-seven percent and forty-four percent of those are emergency.
Right.
That's about four hundred and fifty calls.
I can't imagine.
Which is more than one.
Yes.
Why do you think...
Because beyond our capabilities, what happens there?
What is it usually?
What is... I mean, it could be anything, you know, head injury, trouble breathing, it's beyond the capabilities of those staff that's at emergency home.
What's wrong?
So, and they feel that they need transport to a hospital.
Oh, I see.
Life situation, but it looks like care is developing.
Got it, thank you. Can you give me kind of reimbursement from the...
Yeah, we, well, we build the insurance company for a patient, so.
And what kind of return you get?
We do fine with that.
Well, I mean, you get seventy percent, ninety percent.
I don't know the actual number for the total last year, but our reimbursement, not, no. We can only reimburse up to a Medicare maximum, so federal rules allow that, and then it gets stepped down, and then everything that we get, we have to reimburse the state one half of that.
I'll mind it.
Yeah, it's a, it's a complicated system. It's part of the ground emergency medical transport program that the state adopted and allowing us to participate. The state says that every agency who participates in that has to reimburse it on half of us.
If I could, I'd like to just mention that the rotation signature has weakened, but it's all developed by Schaumburg, which is now by Palatine, heading in our way with heavy rain and maybe hail. So it looks like the main threat right now is hail and rain, not so much tornado.
All right, I hope we're doing the right thing, continuing. I don't know if it's safe,
I don't think it's safe to just go leave right now either, so.
Yeah.
So I think we'll be all right. Paul, thank you very much for the presentation. Any other questions? All right, try not to be distracted here. We have a consent agenda, and on the consent agenda are several items: approval of the January twenty-twenty-four Treasury Report, approval of the board meeting minutes from the February thirteenth, twenty-twenty-four meeting, subject to non-substantive revision.
All right.
Right, and approval of application for the Kildare Countryside School District Ninety-Six P T O to conduct a raffle on three eight twenty-four and on ten twenty-six twenty-four, and waive the twenty-five dollar license fee for both.
Thank you.
Might have to let it be called this one.
We are, we are recording it. This is gonna be one of the more interesting ones.
Yeah.
Okay, so approval of the January twenty-twenty-four Treasury Report, approval of board meeting minutes on February thirteenth, twenty-twenty-four, and approval of an application for the Kildare Countryside School District Ninety-Six P T O to, to conduct raffles on three eight twenty-four and ten twenty-six twenty-four, and to waive the twenty-five dollar license fee for both. Anyone wanna make an open?
I had a modification, just so everyone knows, on item eighteen in regards to village hall renovation. The estimated cost of the rebuild was one hundred and seven hundred and twenty-eight thousand four hundred and ten. I made up a number. I added a number that was incorrect.
Corrected the number there, okay, got it. So with the revisions, uh...
Can we please make a motion?
Okay, move by trustee Riley, second by trustee Tanucci. I guess this would be a, Paul.
Trustee O'Reilly.
Hi.
Trustee Tanucci.
Hi.
Trustee Jamil.
Hi.
Trustee O'Connor.
Okay, motion carried. Wow. Consideration of a letter, cater for the village prosecuting attorney. I understand that Larry, all of Zern, you're here. You've been our prosecutor. By the way, stand up here. This is our prosecutor. And you've been our prosecutor for how many years now?
Two thousand and three, we're about twenty years.
So it's for twenty years, and the agreement and pricing we've been working off has been in place for how long?
Since two thousand and nine.
Two thousand and nine. It hasn't been increased, so what we have before us is a proposal to increase the retainer fee to seven fifty, and the other, the alloy fee goes up to one ten, is that what it is?
No, currently it's a hundred and forty-five dollars an hour for non-train sport traffic work, and we got a hundred and fifty dollar retainer for the month.
Okay.
All traffic's a lot, right, but, and what we're asking for was a hundred thousand for retainer, for train folks, because they're better ones. And the current rate, two thousand, about two thousand, four thousand, five thousand, something like that. And every one full hour we get to that, we're so busy, we're so busy, we have to stay too many hours, we have to, we have to, we have to have a higher rate, two hundred dollars a hour. We have nine other counties that have...
And, and so we budget approximately thirteen thousand dollars a year for the service right now. I don't know what questions the, the board has, right?
Do we have an agreement now? I assume we had an agreement in the beginning, nobody's been funded, because I remember we looked for it six, seven years ago, and it was found with them, and evidently we didn't think about it.
Yeah, I think this is, our firm is engaged, and that's about fifteen thousand, I guess, so I heard, I'm just looking back to what we went through, when the rate changed, the original two thousand three to two thousand nine, that was definitely a lot of our way changed, but I don't, we never had a formal agreement or a contract, so I have to find out, how that could.
Kind of seems like, it kind of...
Yeah, it's right over.
Good.
Sure we have a contract.
Well, ordinarily, the engagement letter that involved, like the one that is in the package tonight for, is the manner in which lawyers are structurally bound to their client. We have a set of professional conduct that overlay all of that, and so that's the contract.
Okay, whatever you call it.
Yeah.
As long as we have something that...
Yeah, if, if you approve it tonight, that letter will serve as the engagement. Yeah, if you approve it tonight, that letter will serve as the engagement terms between the village and Larry's.
Yeah, we do need a motion.
A motion to approve.
Okay, move by trustee O'Reilly, seconded by.
Second.
By trustee O'Connor, by roll call.
Trustee O'Reilly.
Hi.
Trustee O'Connor.
Hi.
Trustee Jamil.
Hi.
All right, thank you. Thanks for your services, we appreciate it. Um, at the same time, we also got a rate increase from the law firm of Filippini, who's the sixth firm here, who's sitting next to us. Um, and it looks like a modest increase. It points to the cost of inflation, and he's not personally taking a raise for his hourly rate, but there's different increases depending on who the attorney is. So.
I'll just.
Okay, move by trustee O'Reilly, seconded by.
I have a question.
Yeah.
What's the difference between, what's the reimbursable amount versus the nonreimbursable amount? I don't understand that.
Under our engagement letter, when we have a, um, I don't remember, the last one that came in was in the subdivision.
Still at the state?
Yeah, we have a differential rate. That's allowed us to keep our rate to the village for services down.
There should be emergency lights right here.
When we have a differential rate for the.
We got the emergency light.
Private developers for reimbursable equity. It doesn't apply to homeowners, it doesn't apply to small subdivisions, and we don't apply, say like the fire protection.
I got it. Thank you.
Okay, so we have a motion to approve by trustee O'Reilly, seconded by.
Second.
By trustee O'Connor, roll call.
Trustee O'Reilly.
Hi.
Trustee O'Connor.
Hi.
Trustee Jamil.
Hi.
All right, next on the agenda is the renewal of the sheriff's police contract. Are there any questions from the board?
Can we resolve, all the reporting that we wanted to resolve a year ago, two years ago?
The new software that we're anticipating to start, so we're working on implementing it right now, so we're, keep working on that, and hopefully it'll be resolved.
If you're there.
I, I think it's fair to say that the contract does not specify what the reporting is going to be. It does have reporting requirements generally stated, and part of it's because of the very reason that Lieutenant indicated, that their software is what generates the reports. And right now, it's a fairly outdated one, and they're looking to get a more updated one. I think that's a fair summary.
Unless you have Internet Explorer.
I, I just was surprised that it all of a sudden was done, and, and we didn't have any discussion. I, I just was surprised.
I, I believe that trustee Borowski has been engaged in that process throughout, but I haven't been involved.
I know, but then he's not got a vote for me either.
No, I, I understand.
That wording has also been in the contract previously, which has tweaked a little bit, but it's been.
Other questions? Trustee Borowski, you went off mute.
No, no questions, Bill. I was going to respond to Bobby, but seems I don't need to.
Okay. Um, anybody else? Anybody want to make a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Moved by trustee O'Reilly.
Second.
Seconded by trustee Tanucci. Roll call.
Trustee O'Reilly.
Hi.
Trustee Tanucci.
Hi.
Trustee Jamil.
Hi.
Trustee O'Connor.
Hi.
Motion carried, thank you very much. Thanks for monitoring the weather, too, so appreciate it. Don't leave, yeah, you can't.
You're welcome, too.
All right, so the next item on the agenda is consideration of resolution accepting an increase in the World Architects Administration fee for the Village Hall bidding and construction. Art, do you want to just explain this a little bit more?
Yeah, the village, uh, there's different components of the, of the, of the, of the process, and the first part of the process, the resolution that the board already approved, that's for the design phase, generally speaking, and, and Matt's here, Pickle from World Architects, to be a little more detailed than me, but that was for the design phase of it. You approved that via a resolution, that work is done, they move now, we had the bidding, we're moving into construction and construction administration. That has to be approved now, too, via resolution. But the cost of that is a little bit less than it was estimated previously because there have been changes in the design and the bids that came in, that sort of thing. So it's moving in the standard process that it was before, things are a little bit better because the bid prices came in. With that, I think I'll turn it over to Matt, and, or any questions over to Matt, and Matt can give us, you might have a little overview right now, too.
Yeah, I mean, Art, you did a good job of summarizing it, right? Our, our original engagement with the village was through the creation of the bid document, and it stated that, you know, should the project go forward into the construction phases, we would, you know, we would have a subsequent fee to continue our services through, through the end of construction. So, that's what we're, this is our terms proposal to the village to form, to continue services.
I do, I need some, I need some clarification.
Of course.
Um, okay, so under construction costs, we went from $1,084 to $1,534. So, you're making that million growth. It, it's, I'm sorry, it's on the first page of what we, I think the packet.
You're talking this summary right here?
Yeah, this summary. That it was in December, it was December 2022, it was $1,084 for, for the building, and we're up to $1,500. Is that the, I think I know why that is, but I, I'd like to hear it from you.
Sure, I mean, this was presented numerous times over the design phase, with the project group, right, the estimate increase. Um, and so that budget that you have there, I think is from November of last year, right?
November 6th.
Yeah. So now we've, we've advanced, and that was, that was the end of the design phase, now we've advanced through the bidding phase, and we've taken bids, and the, you know, the costs have come in favorably in terms of being more, more or less aligned with what we had estimated in November. But from December of '22, when we did the original base need, you know, study, the ability study, the project group, that, that.
So, okay, so we just, that was when we made a figure, that's when that happened?
Yeah.
And then, it says escalation to spring 2024, it's about, it's an additional 47 to 50,000 dollars. That's because.
So that cost estimate was prepared in, in late October, early November of, of 2023.
Yes.
Knowing that the bids were going to be taken for construction to start in spring of 2024. So, our estimator looked at it, and said, if I were bidding this today, this would be the cost, and now I'm going to escalate it for the next six months. Because construction costs, you know, if you go off labor rates.
It's going to keep in.
So, basically, that's saying that if you, if you started the construction, that a.
You're on the microphone.
Price there, and then you add the escalation to when construction is actually scheduled to begin.
I mean, this, this, you know, a question, not, just a weird question. Is that because they're anticipating higher costs, or because costs actually due to inflation or whatever, actually, in other words, if we had broken ground last fall, the numbers would be.
You would have saved about $50,000.
$50,000. So we were in no position to break ground last fall.
Correct.
That's, thank you.
Um, right now, no one can leave the Village Hall, there's a tree down, and the chief is out there stuck, so they're going to get the fire department to cut it out, so just seeing how.
Getting a master service, but this is chief.
Yeah, so just seeing how.
The good news is, the tornado warning has moved north of us.
So you're all stuck here for a little bit, unless you want to walk.
The tornado warning is burning hills and points north.
There you go, Bobby.
And, and so, if you, uh, if you, if you want something ironic, the architect has a spot where the wall is leaking, so.
Exactly, yeah.
There's a huge puddle.
Yeah, that right.
I see it, yeah. Oh my gosh.
So cynical, we know about it. So I think maybe replacing the siding on the exterior of the building would be.
And you want to say it.
I saw it.
You want to say the water came in, right?
I saw it, I saw it.
I mean, we have a ba, we have a bathroom over here.
Yeah.
Right in front of the Village Hall, I mean, right.
Right in the exit.
The road where the exit is the skinny, skinny part of the road.
So when we wanted to get rid of, to move the barns.
That one?
Oh my gosh. Have you got a picture of?
The one we would have had to take down to move the barns.
Yeah. All right, so, um, if I can get order again.
It's over here?
No, it's right as you exit. Yeah. All right, so, any other discussion on this? I mean, it's something we have to do.
Motion to approve.
Okay, move by trustee O'Reilly. Yeah, anybody else? Okay, seconded by trustee O'Connor, roll call, please.
Trustee O'Reilly.
Hi.
Trustee O'Connor.
Hi.
Trustee Jamil.
Hi.
Trustee Tanucci.
Hi.
Okay, motion carried. Um, now, the next one is discussion and consideration of an ordinance amending the village manager's role in hiring staff. There was an edit, did that edit get?
It, it is in the packet, but if it's, it's helpful, let me, let me explain this ordinance and its progression. You may remember, uh, I think it was in December, when Art came before you with two new hires, and trustee O'Reilly asked, why is this coming before the board? We've never done this before. And, uh, I said, well, I think Art was doing it because he's interim and he'd rather have the, the board apprised of it. And Art said, oh, I thought I had to under the village code. And, and looking at the village code, it was, uh, apparent that there was some ambiguity in the language. So, that's what we initially brought forth. Um, the original draft, if you saw it in the packet, only did some cleanup of the language and clarified that. In the meantime, uh, trustee Tanucci noted that the existing language was inconsistent with, uh, some of the activities that we've previously done in terms of personnel. Uh, and when I looked at it more closely, I also realized it wasn't completely on all fours with the Illinois Municipal Code. So the version that's in the packet now, and I, and again, this didn't go into the packet, I don't believe, until, uh, yesterday morning. And so if you look at it over the weekend, it may have changed. Um, the, the changes essentially state, and this is consistent with the Illinois Municipal Code, is that the village manager is responsible for supervision and hiring, and for discharge, but the discharge is subject to the village board approval. And then, insofar as interactions with village staff, that is done primarily, uh, between the village board and staff, is going to be using the village manager as a conduit. That's how we've typically done it. But we've also had occasions, and, you know, they, they happen as the need arises, where, for example, the pathways is a great example, since you're sitting next to me, where trustees are directly involved in some of the activities with, and the village halls and other, I mean, with the economic development, where, where board members have had a more direct role that was interacting with staff and interacting on behalf of the village. I will say, in most communities, um, board members are purely legislative, and I, I often say this, not as a matter of disrespect, but as a matter of simplification, that the only relevant things that board members usually have to say is I or may. Um, in this village, because, again, I, I say oversimplification, but, um, in Long Grove, because we have a small staff, um, you all get a little more elbow deep in some of the activities that, that happen in the village. And so, we've tried to amend this to recognize that reality while still keeping it aligned with what the Illinois Municipal Code provides. So that, uh, as it's stated, the village president, who has chief executive officer responsibilities, not only interacts with the village manager, but may interact with staff, but we're still going to have the village manager as the chief conduit and , uh, point of contact between the staff and the village board. It's a long way of getting to what we changed here, but it's, it's really to make sure that the alignment is, is clear, and to make sure that we're also recognizing the realities of Long Grove and our, uh, both small staff and, uh, more interactive board. That make sense?
Does this get reflected in the employee handbook?
Um, none of this is really the employee stuff. This is really the, the board and the manager, uh, activities. And so this won't affect the handbook directly. But it, obviously, the, the handbook does refer to the village code, so to the extent that this is amended, it will have, uh, you know, a, a reference that, that's going to be impacted in the handbook.
All right, just update, if you need to go now, enough of the tree has been moved by the fire department, chief of psychology just reported, you can exit the parking lot now, so you need to go. All right.
Any, any questions?
The language of the starting order restricts the board members, and in a very general way, you know, even to the active, the delivery employees, it is prohibited. Whereas the board member, apart from the, letting duties, day or far, they should be having an access to the information from any village staff as a independent citizen. So this language, I'm not comfortable with.
Well, insofar as interactions between the board members as individual citizens.
What kind of interaction? If I want to seek information from any village staff, apart from being a board member and a citizen of Long Grove as well, but you should be able to seek information in the meantime.
Yeah, no, that, well, there are different points of contact between the public generally and staff, but in terms of an interaction of the corporate authorities, which, you know, when you're wearing your hat as a member of this board, you have certain authority that you don't have as simply Dr. Jamil, citizen of Long Grove. Now, the citizen of Long Grove rights are not impacted by this. This is really how you exercise your corporate authority's role vis a vis staff. And under the Illinois Municipal Code, that is not something that individual trustees are supposed to be doing. You have a legislative role, not an executive or oversight role. The village president has that role, and the village manager serves as sort of the common point of interaction between the village trustees and, uh, the village staff collectively.
I got it, but the language is very general. We didn't find out that our supervisory role as the village president does, who's involved in the debate, but seeking information, any board member should be able to interact. This is inhibiting the interaction, except to the president and the village manager. Any other board member are restricted to. That's how I get this argument.
Well, I, yeah, I, I, I think that you're conflating the separate roles you have as a citizen and as a member of the village board. Again, there are rights that everyone has as citizens, and they don't change just because you happen to sit up here sometimes. But it's the, you know, you, you clearly have a different role compared, or vis a vis staff, when you are acting as trustee Jamil than when you are simply Dr. Jamil, resident of, of Long Grove. And it's because of that dynamic that the Illinois Municipal Code keeps your role as being one of a legislative, rather than executive, uh, capacity. But as a citizen, you still have the ability to seek information, to ask questions and the like, uh, just as any other citizen. You don't give up any of your citizenship rights by serving on the village board, but you do get extra powers as a member of the board, and this is really to make sure that the way those powers are exercised are aligned with the way the Illinois Municipal Code is set up.
Anyone want to make a motion to approve?
Uh-huh.
Okay, move by trustee O'Reilly, seconded by trustee Tanucci. Roll call, please.
Trustee O'Reilly.
Hi.
Trustee Tanucci.
Hi.
Trustee Jamil.
Stand.
And trustee O'Connor.
Hi.
Okay, that's a yes, so it's approved.
It, it approves, yeah.
Yeah. Um, all right, motion carried. All right, so then, uh, the moment that everyone's been waiting for, discussion and consideration of an ordinance amending the regulation of composting and mulching activities, there's been a lot said about. composting and mulching activities. There's been a lot said about this. Is there anything that needs to be added?
Um, I, I, I just, um, not, not to link in the meeting or anything, but, um, it's been, I noticed the activity last spring and it is extremely frequent. Asked about it, was told about the litigation we had had previously, so I get all that part. October twenty-fourth, October thirty-first being the deadline. Typically, that property in Long Grove stays pretty much empty through the winter, but it starts to build with product. So, you're right, it's kind of a year from now that this potentially would come to a head. Does this owner know that we're doing this?
Uh, if you look at the last paragraph before section three.
Mm-hmm.
Note that it says, "To the extent that they are in excess of the standard set forth in this ordinance."
Mm-hmm. As of today.
Then they, a- as of, uh, March first.
Basically, yes, yes, yes.
Um, then, they have the ability to actually draw down the compost and, and mulching piles over the next seven months.
Mm-hmm.
But if they are already in conformity, they won't be able to build it up after, after March one.
Ah.
Okay, I, I, from what I understood, and I have not gone out and looked at the site, uh, to, to see what it is today, but I understood, um, that it was in excess of these limitations today.
Oh, yeah.
And so, and so, as a result, uh, and, and the reason, very frankly, the reason that we have this phase in, if you will, i- is to- Both avoid a hardship in, you know, when somebody's got their back to a wall, they're more likely to act irrationally and sue. And so, we're trying to give them an opportunity to, to shift their operations without causing undue hardship, and then we will have things on a more normal keel after that time.
Assuming this passes tonight, then a letter will be going to them, uh, tomorrow?
I, I presume that, uh, I, I don't have any contact with, for them or with them, but I presume that a copy of this ordinance can go to any of the operations that involve these types of-
Yeah, and it's more than just this one, there's another one too.
Yeah, it's two or three, yeah.
Yeah.
Can I just ask for clarification on something to make sure I understand? So, if the pile currently exceeds the limits that are proposed in this ordinance, um, they have until the end of October to bring it within compliance. This is the part I want to make sure I understand correctly. If it currently exceeds the limit, they cannot add more to it between now and the end of October, but they have till the end of October to bring it within the limits. Is that correct?
Uh, we say that they can maintain the existing piles.
Right.
So, they can't go more. That would be, that would be increasing the degree of nonconformity, which we don't allow in our ordinance. But, you know, if, if they're currently ten feet high, they can keep them at ten feet high so long as they are down to the, not more than five feet and the area limitations by the end of October.
So, it can't get bigger than it is now.
Correct.
But they have till the end of October to bring it within compliance.
A- a- and, and if you want to make that, uh, you know, underscore that point, we can add such lot may continue to maintain but not expand.
Yeah.
Such mulch. I have no objection to that. I mean, if it's a, an exclamation point on that issue, there's no point in not putting it in there.
How do you police it?
Uh, I mean, the enforcement of whether they go up or down is always going to be dependent on observation. Uh, I know we have some interested people here who might be able to help with that observation, um, but, but ultimately, that's, you know, like any kind of, you know, when somebody goes forty miles in a twenty mile an hour zone, you only can catch them if you know that they're doing it and somebody sees them.
Right.
They do just add more and more lines of mulch at times. There are times that it's completely gone, and there are times that new lines of mulch just form because they've got truck, truck dropping.
Homer, trustee Yager, do you have a question? Hey, Larry, did you hear that?
They say, well-
Yeah, how do we do that?
-get it from here and put it here, and that's why, you know, you, you get into kinds of-
That's true, we could use satellite.
We use it for insurance. You can get a mimic of, of points, of points throughout the course that will have the pictures of all locations. Even though you don't have a contract, you can go backwards and forwards and we'll give you the exact footprint of what that is out there. Pretty phenomenal.
That'd be great to do, like on a monthly basis. Why doesn't it monitor what's actually going on with them?
They're not, they're not cutting down trees and making mulch. They're, it's like a holding.
Yeah, it's a con-
It, it, it's a interim spot for their activity. This is a, a company that's got its primary business, uh, in Volo.
So, uh, Larry, you heard that, right? So, you'll help us with this.
Absolutely, yeah. I mean, the ideal thing to do is, we, we affect the data, we'll take video photographs, you know, and, and we have the right to inspect the property. And then, like, if we have a baseline, that things aren't increasing or, you know, maybe we plunged as well, if they fall down on it throughout the summer, they can't maintain, but if they get in a harsh weather, they're, you know, this is what we describe in the ordinance.
Why do we have a right to inspect the property?
Why do we have a right?
Because of this ordinance? Is that the, uh-
Well, we always have a right to inspect the property, it's our ordinance, isn't it? Um, you know.
And, and this is, this is plain view stuff. It's not like we're, we're, you know-
I know, I know.
Breaking in their front door.
I know, but we're, we're on their property, trespass.
No, well, it's, it's not a trespass if there is probable cause, and since this is in plain view, that's something which, uh, you know, there, there's an enforcement capability for. You know, if they were doing this in a house, that'd be a different story. I wouldn't want to live in that house, but, you know.
All right, does somebody want to make a motion to approve?
I would make a motion.
Bill, can I, can I ask a couple of questions?
Yeah, go ahead. Yep, Chris.
Hey, thank you, I appreciate it. Um, so, the, the whereas, 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 does this, um, ordinance target the specific challenge that we're having, or how does it affect any other residential homeowner? Or is residential homeowner sort of excluded by this agricultural expanded use language in here? Because I'm, I'm just trying to think of the guy whose tree falls down and the tree guy chips it up and drops a big old pile of wood chips under somebody's thirty-five pine trees, which could happen.
Well, I think that there's a difference between mulch being spread and what is actually a, a mulch or compost pile. You know, one is the incorporation of it into the soil, the other one, or, or as a topping on the soil. And, and even then, if it's five feet high, then that would be problematic. But I don't think that this would be intended to cover, uh, mulching for, for landscaping purposes.
Well, no, I, I, the reason I asked the question, thank you, Vic, the reason I asked the question is, um, I have a, you know, empirical experience where a tree falls down and they chip it up, and I've got like this mountain of wood chips that get dumped under my pine trees, and it's the middle of winter and it's a frozen pile of wood chips. And it takes literally several weeks before it thaws out and I'm able to spread it. So, that's an actual occurrence for something that happened to me, um, in twenty twenty-two, maybe? So, I had this pile of wood chips sitting there because I couldn't touch them. They were frozen solid. And it was way bigger than five feet and way bigger than ten feet. It was a truckload of wood chips. They dumped the whole, I mean, we chunked up a big tree. So, that, that's my concern. And then, and why are we doing this by square footage and not by pure volume? I mean, I, I mean, I mulch all my pine trees and I'm doing way more than ten, a hundred square feet of mulch, if you will. Why not a volumetric metric here instead of a area and a height?
I think from, uh, at least from a, an enforcement perspective, it seemed that having a, an area designation was more easily achievable, and the height also is more easily achievable. I think doing the volumetric, uh, is possible, but it's obviously more complex. I mean, you can, you can come out with a cubic, you know, I mean, this would be about seventeen and a half cubic yards if, if it were, you know, a cubed, uh, area.
So, I'm still trying to figure out with the resident, uh, the homeowner, does or doesn't do. I mean, you know, ten square feet is nothing, and a truckload of wood chips that's five feet tall is nothing, and we're going to exceed that with a truckload of wood chips, right?
It's a hundred, it's a hundred, Chris, it's a hundred square feet.
That's ten by ten, that's a tri- well, I'm sorry, I, I stand corrected, ten by ten. I mean, it's ten square, ten feet by ten feet, it's a hundred square feet. It's nothing. It's a truckload of wood chips, right? I mean, I'm going to do that. That, that is a regular occurrence, you know? I'm spreading mulch under, I don't know, thirty-five pine trees. I'm going to, I'm going to exceed your, your limit as soon as that guy drops his, his, his truckload of wood chips.
Can it be based on time? In other words, uh, three months, six months? I do have had times where I've had enormous piles.
We can certainly state, uh, now, you know, I basically have an exception for, uh, temporary depositing of, of mulch for, uh, landscaping purposes and, and put a timeframe on it. I, you know, I don't know what timeframe you were. I mean, when I've had that done, I, I usually set one weekend as I decide to do that, but, but, you know, maybe others-
Do them three, three and a half acres, man. Drop a truckload of chips at a time, yeah.
I didn't have that. That'd be a little more challenging.
It sounds like we're trying to distinguish between mulch that's used on the property where it sits versus a, a, old and transported somewhere else. Can that be the distinguishing characteristic?
Commercial versus residential.
Yeah, thank you. That's a more distinct way of saying it, precise way of saying it.
Well, yeah, there's just something where-
Sorry, I don't mean to, I didn't mean to complicate it, but yeah.
No, is there, is there a way to put something in there, uh, so temporarily, if a tree was cut down or, uh, mulch was being delivered to be, to your point, installed around your house? Those would be exceptions.
Personal use?
Personal use, there you go.
Versus commercial use?
Is there a way to amend it? Vic's doing it on the fly here, so.
You know, devil's advocate, are, are we sure that this is going to stop the mulch problem? What if somebody says, "Okay, I don't want to screw around with mulch anymore. I'm going to do gravel instead"?
I think that'd be difficult to call that agriculture, but anyways.
I don't, okay, all right, very good.
That's why, that's why they're allowed to do it. It's agriculture.
I see.
Somehow that-
Thank you.
If you look at, uh, if you look at subparagraph E, we do state that any mulch or compost maintained shall only be for the use and benefit of such lot. Um, a- and maybe what we want to do is to, to have that expanded, you know, use that as a little more latitude for, um, the, the temporary depositing of mulch or compost for such lot.
Which section is that again?
Uh, E is in Edward.
Obviously, with trucks going in and out constantly, not for personal use.
Just, just for residential landscaping as, or, or just landscaping as opposed to commercial use?
Well, I mean, yes, but I mean, what, Vic, what do you change there to?
I'm, I'm trying to figure out what would be, if, I'll, I'll, let me, uh, if you want to go on to the next item.
Okay.
Uh, and come back to this, and I'll, I'll, I'll see if I can work some, some language that will, subject to filling in the blank as to duration.
Okay, let's move to, um, number fourteen, the village planners' report, which I think Art's going to have to give today.
Yeah, um, Amanda's, um, kind of stormed.
Stormed out?
Stormed out, yeah, stormed.
Well, not stormed out, but, uh, yeah.
Anyway, Amanda, if you've noticed, her, her planner's report is much more detailed than usual, and that's because they're preparing, preparing for the transition, um, as Mundaline no longer, uh, at the end of, uh, May first will no longer be the plannings and the code service for the village, and we have a request for proposals out now to get a new provider in there. But she has provided a very in-depth study. You've seen this in, in a very shortened version in my manager's report. She has put together a very, uh, detailed report. That'll be used by whichever firm or firms are hired to do this. If there are any questions you have on this, please contact myself, Dana, um, and if we have to, we will forward them on to Amanda. Uh, but you can see it's real detailed, and there are, there are quite a few projects that are, are going on and are ongoing, and some are in different, they're all in different stages of gestation, if we might say. A lot of that is due because the, um, either because they're backlog and, and, um, in Mundaline or because, and more likely is the case, that they haven't submitted all the information required, such as for the case of the, um, the Hindu Center on Route twenty-two, they are not quite, um, they have a number of materials they have to provide yet, uh, before, um, they can have that in front of the, um, returned back to the, is it the AC committee or the PCZBA? Vic, I forget.
It, it goes before the PCZBA.
PCZBA. So, that's the, kind of the, the short summary of this, but if you have any questions, please let me know. If you have any questions, I'll try to answer them.
So, you know, Ed was here. I don't know if we answered your question. Did we answer the question?
Um, anyway, so you indicated earlier that you wouldn't, of course, see any further action on this until sometime in April, maybe, maybe late April?
Well, the, the process is still the same as we've talked about in the past. That is, that once the application is ripe for consideration, it will be subject to public notice, um, and then that will be a notice for a hearing that will be before the PCZBA. The PCZBA will hold the hearing, make a recommendation, and then it will come to this body for consideration and action.
April was the best estimate that the village planner had based on the materials that had yet to be submitted, et cetera. So, again, it's just wait and see, but the process, as, as the village attorney said, has not changed at all. Notification will still be there. Nothing will happen without the property owners surrounding there being notified.
So, in a, in a scenario where, let's say, uh, April fifteenth, the, all the qualifications are met, and then maybe we put the sign out and say, "There's a zoning hearing first of May, uh, fifteen days subsequent." Is that how that-
Generally speaking, yeah, you'll get plenty of notice before the meeting so that you'll have time to, to, you know, put on your calendar and come to the meeting, et cetera.
But there's going to be a written notice mailed too, right?
Yeah, I think, I forget, it's five hundred feet within the property, um, Vic, and I think the members of, of your, um, subdivision there, um, would get the word out to the rest of you.
I believe it's two fifty, but-
Two fifty.
It'll still be, uh, be adjoining, adjoining property at, at least.
Plus the sign, I believe, and some, some, uh, if-
And, and as a side note-
...size of the sign and so forth compared to all the stuff we initially did.
There's certain regulations, the sign has to be the, the size of the, of the lettering, et cetera, that sort of thing.
Trustee O'Reilly, if you can.
Does the sign go up when the hearing begins, or does the sign go up when the-
It goes when the notice. It'll be in that fifteen to thirty day period.
Okay. Fifteen to, fifteen days before the first hearing?
Correct.
Okay. And it'll be on twenty-two?
Yes, yeah, it has to be visible from the road.
Yeah, but it's another road.
Another road. Yeah.
The, uh, the original sign that was put up, well, we were sort of blind invited by this bad in August, was two foot wide and eighteen inches high, and the letters were maybe an inch and a half tall. Um, and there was some discussion, I guess, at the time that, you know, that was the minimum requirement that this needed, I guess, but obviously, there was some talk amongst the board members that that sign should be of an adequate size that could be seen by passing traffic of other residents in the area who have reached out to us en masse, indicating their opposition to this as well. So, I'm hoping that that will truly be the case when that, if, when that goes forward.
I'll, I'll check on what size, size is required. They meet those size requirements, see, and they've complied.
Well, is this for the benefit of the Long Grove residents or the benefit of the apples?
Just compl- it's compliance with the regulations. It's, it's designed to be, to meet the needs of both. I don't know, I'm just telling you, I don't-
We've seen signs, the only signs on Long Grove that are five, six feet wide and-
Yeah.
Three, four feet tall.
Right, some, some put up larger than required, and some, some don't meet the requirements, and then they have to be changed and-
I have to go by time, five times to be reordited at forty-six.
Yeah. I will check, I will check with the village planner and see what the requirements are and what the-
Art, it's, uh, it's Amanda.
Oh, Amanda's here.
Hey. We, we have standard signs that go out for every case. We don't make them special for any particular case. So, they're standard sides that are used for, for every single one.
Is there some relativity between the signs- Is there some relativity between the size of the lot and the size of the sign?
No, it's.
You did 10 acres, you get, they have a bigger sign.
Uh, there isn't a requirement for that, but, uh, if there are like multiple frontages, they would get multiple, like a sign on each frontage, and we, we always try to put it in like the most, you know, visible location if we can, so if it's on a corner, we would prefer to put it near an intersection where if someone's sitting for a little while, um, at a stop, they'll see it.
Well, this is a 45 mile an hour speed limit highway, unless you're stuck in traffic and then you might see it.
Maybe at night.
Um, just a side note, there's been a tractor that's been parked, that's been removed, but they still left the, the attachment, the attachment's supposed to be moved by the weekend.
Um, so what else you got in the report or does Amanda have some issues or anything else you want to talk about?
Um, I mean, the only other thing that, um, is really pressing is the other item that's following this, um, about the, the siding, so there was a AC meeting last night, um, that considered the signing at 4:40, Robert Parker Coffin Road, um, Senior Planner Tim Verbeck was there, uh, to sit in on the meeting and he wrote up a summary, um, the AC did not approve the, um, material, they, they did approve a, um, motion about approving, um, materials in characteristic with the, the Long Grove character and considering amendments to the materials, um, but that, that wasn't a strong enough approval, um, in, in our position, so, uh, it, it was, it's before the board.
You're talking about the, the siding for the 4:40 Robert Parker Coffin Road?
That's correct.
Application?
Yes.
They approved the material, four of the five items were approved, it was the one item which was the detail they did approve.
Okay.
It's already reported, it was approved already in the downtown, it's already at Landmark and in Washington Dance, it's already there, it's already in downtown.
All right, so we're gonna, we'll move to that in one second, anything else on the Village Planner's Report, then we'll move to this.
I want to say thanks to Amanda, that's a very detailed, very valuable report, thank you.
Can I ask a question about one of the, one of the properties?
Yes.
Um, keep rentals, that they, they were caught by, by, they proposed storage units. Well, actually, uh, two, there was one for, I think it was Deer Trails also, it just doesn't seem like it was recorded, so I'm not, I'm not sure what that, I'm not sure the semantics.
Uh, Deer Trails, you may remember, was that and the property to the south came in more or less at the same time, um, neither of them, uh, completed all the steps necessary for a final plat to be reported, so, um, that's the status of both of those, that they did get approval, but they did not finish all the required steps for a final plat of subdivision, Amanda, I, I'm right about both of those, right?
Um, this, was one of those, the storage, I was having a little bit of trouble hearing.
No, it was the, the, the two Old Hicks, uh, subdivisions, Deer Trail on the north and.
Karen's Corner.
Karen's Corner on the south, I think both of those, while they were approved, I don't think either of them have a, had gone to the final plating stage for recordation.
Is there a deadline?
That's correct, and, um, Deer Trail is, uh, should be coming to the board shortly because they are, um, going through the AC, they should be there in March with their home package, uh, for consideration, and then they'll go through the Plan Commission to update the PUD with that package and then to the board, so, so that one will be coming.
They've submitted new elevation plans that, um, Amanda has and they're scheduled for March 18th for the AC meeting and then they, as Amanda said, they would go to the PCZBA after that, but Karen's Corner, there's been nothing, um, from that owner, anything new on that, but they are adjacent to each other.
Yeah, we, we haven't seen anything on that one.
My understanding, they sold that property to I Doc.
Uh, there, there was a portion that was sold to I Doc and that happened before the final PUD. That was addressed in the documents that were, the approval documents. Vic, we have an easement that's been recorded in connection with that.
I don't think. Anyway, I know, I, I, I get it, I understand, um, so, okay, so that takes care of that one, was there was the, um.
The keep storage and.
Yes, but, yeah.
The rental tax or whatever.
So did, did we spring something on?
Um, it, it, just a quick background, that, uh, property is currently a non-residential, um, they came in with a plan that was for a non-residential use, storage, uh.
Right.
Uh, use, um, the proposal, um, was not conforming to many of the bulk standards that we have in terms of floor area, in terms of setbacks, in terms of a variety of things. Uh, they were looking for relief in those respects.
Right.
And, you know, one of the considerations for granting that type of relief as part of, and they were going to do that as a planning development, is what is the benefit to the public, they don't have any sales tax generation, so there's not going to be much benefit to the, to the public, so there was at least conversation about maybe having a per unit tax and, uh, that I think is what they're saying, oh, they were surprised about it, um, I mean, it, it's something that was put out there and I think, um, that's something that's still under review.
And I, well, I remember because I, it was my request and I don't think I was the only one, that it not looked so, um.
Oxey?
Industrial.
Yeah.
Yeah, that it, you know, look a little, a little more attractive, because it's a tricky piece of property to develop because of the topography.
No, I mean, there's, there's all sorts of, all sorts of issues with that property, I mean, it's a challenging piece, no question.
Okay, all right, thank you, and, and questions should go through you, Art, right? We're not just calling Amanda directly or anything.
Right, yeah, yeah, and, um, and check, check out my, um, report too, there's some deep, there's some differences between, not differences, there's different details in Amanda's versus my report.
Yes, and I have questions for you later, so.
All right, are you ready? Are, are we, um, good with the Village Planner's Report? Thank you, um.
If you want to go back.
I, I do want to go back, um, to the ordinance for the composting and mulching, Vic? No, we're gonna come back to him, we're gonna come back because he's on another agenda item, he's number 15, so just, no, we're not, we're not, we haven't gotten to it yet, um, so stand by, and we're gonna move something else up too, maybe we'll, we'll even move that up first to, to, to do a softball right away, but go ahead, Vic.
Right, uh, in light of the concerns that, that Trustee Borowski and, and O'Reilly had, had made, I think that this may address the temporary use of something that's bigger than what is otherwise called for in the ordinance, so this would be at the beginning of that final paragraph after, uh, after subparagraph F as in Frank, right now it says, "To the extent that any lot, blah, blah, blah," uh, that's a technical legal term, I will, uh, I would suggest that we first say, notwithstanding the foregoing, that would be all of the A through F, a lot used principally for residential purposes may maintain a compost or mulch pile that exceeds the area or height restrictions of this section, but only for a period not to exceed blank days, I'll, I'll leave it to you all to figure out what that is, and only to the extent that such mulch or compost pile is used exclusively on such lot. So I think what that, what that does is it allows the homeowner to do it, I think that we still want to put, and that's the blank days, I think we still want to put some kind of time limit on it because the whole point of this has been, uh, perhaps what some people might think is, uh, an impactful, uh, oversized mulch pile or compost pile.
Trustee Borowski, do you have a, uh, you know, a days that would work for you, 30 days or something like that? Are you still there?
Sorry, no, Bill, I'm there, just unmuting, um, you know, I, my, my problem was it dropped the mulch and it froze and I had to wait for it to, I had to wait for it to thaw out before I could move it, um, so I, 30 days, is that too much?
I don't think 30 days is.
Oh, I, I, I was, I was thinking we'd probably be in 60 days.
About 60 days, Chris.
Perfect for me, I, literally my pile froze and I had to wait for it to defrost, so, yeah, that'd be great, thank you, thanks.
Gonna put it in my refrigerator, it would have defrosted right away.
Oh, gee. Okay, so based on this revision, does anyone want to make a motion to approve?
I already made the motion, but I would add the, um.
So there would be two changes, the, the first one that we talked about, the, but may not enlarge language, as far as they can continue, and then this new language that I just read.
Yes, those two.
Okay, uh, moved by Trustee O'Reilly as amended, seconded by Trustee O'Connor, uh, roll call.
Trustee O'Reilly.
Hi.
Trustee O'Connor.
Hi.
Trustee Jamil.
Hi.
And Trustee Tanucci.
All right, all right, motion carried, now, um, we can do one of two things here, number one, this is your call, I'm gonna let you decide, discussion and consideration of a conditional approval to special event application for the filming of my grown-up Christmas wish, do we want to do that now?
Yeah, I got the permission from all, so I'm.
Would you, and, or would you want, want to talk about your appeal first? For, for, with what? All right, let's talk about film, so what, what are we, um, approving here on this one, um, the application and what's the, what's the change?
So, the application, this is, you guys are aware, we had the application, I guess, there was some miscommunications initially as far as a complete application.
Can I stop you, North Kruger might be, uh, closed if you're going that way too, so be careful.
Wow, this is so clean and healthy.
Yeah.
From the board, my goal is a downtown revision, to have applications to you guys at dates as long as I can, so that was always our goal, we'd be a year or two years out with dates that were all pretend pages, so on movie application, this application actually was a village scan of six weeks ago, but there was a miscommunication as far as, is it a complete application to present to you guys versus not, there was just, so we're getting that corrected with, with staff and, and our downtown association, so I do apologize that we're here and this, this is gonna be filmed here in 25 days, uh, there would have been almost three month period there, so I do apologize for that, um, what's important to you today is our, to your approval for the movie, as well as you guys have had now a list of shots that they're including in the areas of downtown, as a state of Latin, the whole was being shot in Long Grove, originally it was gonna be three pounds, it all, it is all Long Grove, um, some of the elements that are in the movie, um, there's gonna be a pound festival, and one of the areas would like to use the pound festival is Brothers Field, and we're asking as a downtown, if we can utilize them to put up a deep tent and create a, a festival environment outside of what Brothers Field does, because we know there's a limitation on time now, um, also as a downtown board, we're gonna be having craft beer at the end of April, so there's two elements here, we'll be allowed to put up the tent for the movie on March 21st, on or about, within a few days, they're based on weather, conducting movie which would be, conclude on the 12th of April, and then instead of taking that tent down, because obviously Brothers Field will put it up on, on March or May 1st, we've actually requested on our, our application, two days prior to that, we could bring a craft beer, and we're actually conducting craft beer at Brothers Field, because of the safety aspect, we're trying to keep it off the, the parking lot because we need that parking, so it would be in Brothers Field, so what we're asking is, could we, as a downtown, through our permitting process, have them put the tent up, which is gonna be covered by the association and by the corruption company, and then maintain it beyond May 1st, and then obviously Brothers Field has their application to see which would be in conjunction with what they're doing, so we have no part of that as a part of it, this would just be those, those really 45 days.
So you, you're basically asking for the, uh, the movie special events, so in addition to that, you're asking that a tent be put on Brothers Field's property, and the tent will be there from March 25th to April 12th, um, Fred, um, Brother, uh, Brothers Field is gonna have their Fred Astaire Dance, um, salsa night on April 13th, 14th, and they have an application in for that, however, they're not gonna use the tent, they're gonna use the indoor, the building there, so they don't need the tent, but you're gonna have a craft beer fest from, uh, April 26th to the 29th, it's actually April 27th, but you need the tent up 26th to 29th, so you're asking if that tent can stay up from March 25th through April 29th, a little bit of a month, so you'll take it down so that you can also use that same tent for the, the beer contest.
Yeah, so from a downtown, it pays us $1,600, they have to take it up and down, that $1,600 from a accounting standpoint over the long way for the association, so that's why we're asking we have to do this.
Okay, so what, if we approve this tonight, what else, what other, it, it would be conditional approval, what are the other conditions, or is everything all in order?
Um, everything's in order because the only thing that, um, Brothers Field still has to come in for their permissions for the Fred Astaire Salsa Night and a, and a temporary beer license, but that's gonna be on a different board, that'll be at the next board meeting.
The tent come down?
When's the tent come down?
When would the tent come down?
Uh, the 29th, April 29th, so it'd be up from March 25th to April 29th.
That's for the beer festival?
Yes.
Only?
No, it's for the movie too.
It's for the movie.
I understand, I understand.
Yeah, but basically the tent's not gonna be.
Stayed up beyond the movie.
The tent won't be used at all, and, and I don't know, maybe that's the condition, that the tent not be used at all from April 13th through April 25th, the, otherwise somebody might use it without having any permission and we don't know what they're using it for.
Anyone want to make a motion to approve?
Oh, gosh.
I'm looking at you because you made all the motions tonight.
I'll do, I'll make a motion to, to, uh, allow the tent to be there until April 29th.
And the special event itself.
And the special.
Okay, moved by Trustee O'Reilly.
Second.
Uh, second by Trustee Tanucci, roll call.
Trustee O'Reilly.
Hi.
Trustee Tanucci.
Hi.
Trustee Jamil.
Hi.
Trustee O'Connor.
Hi.
All right, motion carried, all right, so now the appeal of the, to the Architecture Committee ruling on the renovation request for the 440 Robert Parker Coffin Road siding, Brian, yeah, you want to make a presentation?
There was actually two, uh, two, I'll suggest they went through the, there's two amendments, the first one was they, they looked at the current scope and they said we, and secondly they went through saying we wanted to see more, which we would approve. Um, as you know, Dave and I bought 440, the great multi-colored building that the downtown map is, needs a, a dire need of repair, um, what we're looking to do is, you guys looked at your board package, is this would be a look of the downtown building with a lot of, everything's really coked out in white trim with the gray, one of the big comments that the architect figured in is we have one more color, um, from a budgeting standpoint, Dave and I had accorded this whole project so we can stay in budget, because obviously it's a very expensive process to bring this property to life, of which we do have tenants already lined up for April and May, so we're excited about what's about to come to town, it's just, how do we do it to stay in budget and, you know, keep all of the tenants in order, so these are the original two colors that were established, this would be the main siding, which is last siding, this is the color that would be our trim, as well as in the center building, this is gonna be a shaker, uh, hardy board material, so to clarify, yesterday, the material was approved, the look and finish was approved, the only thing that wasn't approved is, you know, there's some wall sconces, there's things that are there on the building that are detailed, that are done in wood, Dave and I are putting everything in a hardy board material, it, it, it looks good, it had a 25 year warranty and it becomes a maintenance free, so it doesn't run into the problem that we're faced with with most of the wood buildings downtown, where they get weather, unfortunately pests create issues, the birds create issue, and they will run down, as you, right downtown, you'll see, this will eliminate the issue, the one thing that we did here and we, we listened to yesterday is, could we add third color, so we did talk to the company today and, and it's about a $40,000 increase to bring in third colors to the building structure, so we would have this look, so this would be, let's pretend we're at the bridge first, this would be the bridge, this would be the fourth unit, the center building, then this would be now the second unit, and this would be the first unit.
Oh, the, oh, the bridge.
Color wise, color wise.
We're gonna have three colors, before we only proposed two colors, and I think the important to understand the shake, the shake really looks nice in the middle, it's gonna be white.
Sure.
If you, if you take a look at the corner building landmark, and if you look at the red, the red is the shake, and that one, that's very expensive, but it's a very cool look, that's really gonna define it because they gotta hand put that on there as, as opposed to the rest of the building to be last siding, which is very, very cost effective as far as, and, and as far as sealing the building, but.
Sure.
It's gonna, it's gonna, it's gonna be very unique and very distinctive and, and very nice, and the, the other element.
Could I see the picture of the proposed one? We have the, we have the current.
So you have the proposed, and the only thing that's in there that's expressed everyone, everything is encased in white on every corner, it's a program, this is a hardy board program, so it's more about to show you the hardy board siding, then all the trim molding, the one thing that's gonna be on here is that the trim molding is gonna have different texture sizes, so on certain elements, we're gonna have an eight inch trim board, on other elements. On other elements, we're gonna have a four and six, and that is gonna be defined, what's defined in the, in the layout and the, and the trim up, the building, the windows, the sign areas. So the goal here is to kinda create something clean, crisp, and, and refreshing. I mean, it is gonna brighten this whole area, clean it up, um, and again, like I said, we have tenants lined up, and we're excited. Everyone that we have here is excited about the change of the building. This is the, this is the existing building, I mean, it is in bad shape, I mean, and there's not much you can do with trying to re-do this. Um, the wood is falling apart. This is going to solve our problem and, and clean up the inside-outside, it's gonna look phenomenal. Um, the reason we're asking for this is approval today, a lot of the bids that we have gotten, if they can start now at this time of season, we actually are getting a deal and a break by doing it now versus the middle of the season. Because in the middle of the season, demand is up, costs go up. Um, the challenge that we originally had is by adding the two colors, we could buy a quantity discount and save us money. Again, we listened to Gene yesterday and the board, they said, can we, is there anything we can do? Can we add a third color? So we said yes. Today, we discussed it with the contractor, a third color would be added to the option. So what we're looking for today is an approval so we can start the project, order the material, and get this property back in a solid working order.
I love you, but they did that.
So what, when you look on here, you've got some of the, um, corbels that are on the top of the roof, the ceiling, I can't do that in, in, in this type of material. If we did those details, the cost is so great to put all the little cutouts, it's, it's too, in the pencil, it's very expensive, you can't pencil over last siding.
If you with wood, they just could cut a little piece of wood and like, oh, there's our dental thing.
And, and you know, they suggested, let's mix different, uh, different types, use wood and hardy wood. Hardy board does not suggest mixing units, it, it does have an effect on warranty, you can't cut it and, and misuse it, it, it won't have a true effect with. At the end of it, if we did use a wood and a hardy board, I would have complaints from people, why isn't that look so bad to compare to this, the finish you guys see? And I'll pass it around so you guys can see the three different colors that would be used.
I just have a, a quick question for you.
Yes.
You know, there, there are colors that go with years of design, you know, we had green, gold, and rust in the sixties or seventies, I think, you know. Today, the, the industrial look is big with white, with the black windows, and there's gray everywhere, everywhere. And, and I'm just wondering, on, on Robert Parker Coffin, on that stretch from the bridge to where the, uh, the word in my head is lumber company, not a lumber company, but it's a window place.
Landmark.
Thank you, landmark, I knew it was a landmark, I knew it was a landmark. Uh, so there's a lot of gray on that street already.
There's one, one gray building there, that's why we went with this. It's, uh, Julie, Julie Newman is gray, um, there's a lot of white.
Landmark is gray.
It, it's a white, gray, and, and a maroon. You've got John Papekki, which is the brown.
Right, and you are...
I'm, I'm blues and, and multiple, there's blue, green, and, and like a soft, a soft blue.
Okay, I'm thinking.
You've got Baby Baby Moore, which is a, um...
Blue and white.
Dark blue, yeah. Um, and then you've got Old Visitor Center, which is white.
Yeah, yeah.
So this is, we chose these colors because it defines the space separately from, from the rest of the downtown.
Okay.
Uh, what we also hope for is that, there are a lot of buildings that could use this type of look to it, and hopefully, this is gonna help, because there's a lot of people that have been told that hardy board is not an approved product downtown? When actually it was approved back when Landmark did their products, uh, their projects. And I think there's a lot of proprietors that, that would love to go back and put this product out there, because it, it does, it creates a lot of depth to the building, and we don't run into at five years, what are we doing? What are we gonna do to maintain it? It's a twenty-five-year warranty and it's a solid product.
Does this have to go past the historical society?
The building's not historic and it's already approved product.
Okay, got it.
Yes, that's why I said...
And I saw there was a fifty-year warranty.
Uh, there's twenty-five commercials.
Ah.
Um, can I, can I ask a question?
Oh, no.
So what, what, what color are you gonna paint the doors?
The doors are gonna be white.
Okay, the doors will be white. What, what are you planning to do for the signs? I'm assuming you'll have...
So the sign is gonna be a, like a four-by-eight black, no, it's not gonna be four-by-eight, it's gonna be to the sign requirements that we have as zoning ordinance right now.
Okay.
And it's gonna be penciled in white, so it'll be whatever building's color that will be, so if we use, if we use this color right here, and I'm just gonna use your picture for a second. So let's say you're looking at a green building, how you have that white board?
Yes.
So that would be what we have in the color. So if the color of the siding is this, it'll be a flat panel, four-by-eight sheet plywood, that'll be cut, it's hardy board material. It'll be cut to that, that design, and then it'll have a white pencil st- uh, uh, around it, so that you can define the space for the signage. We're gonna make sure we maximize it based on the exact requirements of the village, so someone doesn't go out there and say, oh, I can make my sign as large as I want. No, it has to maintain within the size of this area.
Now, the, the signs, would that have to go back before the architectural commission?
I think all signage has to go back.
Yeah, so...
How, how sterile does the, and these are just...
So, the, the trim is where you can't get, that's where you don't see all the detail of the trim. So imagine, in some of these buildings here, an eight-inch trim that's on the outside, and then you've got six-inch trim above the doors.
And the tree scale is square.
The fish scale, that's the center element, so, and then this is gonna have a white strip down too, so each physical unit is gonna be fine.
So that's fine.
You're gonna know there's five physical units, not just by that, but you're also gonna have five individual colors. Two colors repeat, but they're not gonna be in a pattern, they'll be in opposite pattern.
And this won't look so naked?
It will not, it will not. No, but you're gonna see a lot more detail, because when we do the trim, especially even with the signs, you're gonna see a lot more, it's really gonna be distinguished with the, of so much white trim that we're gonna have on there. And like Ryan was saying, and if you, the difference between like a, an eight-inch trim, it, it's pretty distinctive. And if you look there today, there's nothing on that building today that looks distinctive. I hate to say it, the trim is falling apart, it's rotted. So this is enhancing our town, I think it's going to enhance the look of it, I think you truly will have more applicants coming to town saying, I wanna now do this to my building. And again, we can keep that character we have, it's just gonna clean our town.
Well, and it probably will have planting.
Good, nice one, I think, we're not at that landscaping side of it yet, uh, with the tenants we have, and one of the tenants is a florist, so I'm sure they're gonna have some, some opportunities there, so, uh, we'll, we'll have that presentation later on. So what is asking for approval?
I, I just wanna go around, any comments? Are you okay with what's being proposed?
I, I, I think it could be, uh, a motivation or an incentive to look a little better.
Um, Rita?
I, I think it's great.
Nope. It's good, okay, no comment. Now, um, the only, Jean, Jean's here, and I just wanted to give her an opportunity to speak. I think the board's aligning to this change. Is there any thoughts that you have on this?
My, I, thank you for, um, letting me speak about this. I, um, all I can do is tell you what the entire commission decided and discussed yesterday. We, first of all, we, we said that two colors was not eclectic enough in a span of five buildings at such a prominent, particularly at such a prominent location. So we, it's very, I appreciate that the petitioners have added a third color. I cannot see it on the screen, so I have no idea if the commission would approve that or not. So that may have to, to go through staff, uh, because the color, thanks, I appreciate that, but it's a little, it's a little, it's much different. Um, so I, I, I don't know what the commission would say about the third color, but I will say, um, that window and door trim in strips, even if they are in varying widths, is not ornament. And I would ask you to take a careful look at the buildings as they are today, and you will see, there is a pediment over a door. There is, um, there's a copper awning, there is a, 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 asphalt roof awning, there is multiple trims at the cornices of some of these buildings. There is a copper half, uh, like lunette type of, um, not a window, but I guess a feature is what I would call it, on the roof of another building. The, this building, or this set of buildings, um, is, is literally what we were saying last night, it's the poster child for the Long Grove style, which has been defined in the code and the guidelines as eclectic. And I would just consider that all of that is being removed. There are a couple of features that, that are not on the, uh, rendering that, that we looked at last night, that I think the petitioners are including. There's a window in that smaller gable window, there's an iron grate that, you know, there are things that the petitioner said that they would retain, which we appreciate. But the vast majority of the ornament that are character-defining features of this building, of these buildings, are being stripped. So you are getting boxes that are, that, that are outlined in, in white trim. That is what you're getting, if you approve this. And we felt last night, and it was, we, we took a roll call, it was a unanimous decision, that, that the drawing that we received, um, is, is not in compliance with the village code, uh, nor is it in compliance with the downtown business, historic downtown business guidelines, for that reason.
Four of the five are not compliant. Four are compliant, the five of the ornaments are to maintain as much as you can. Let's get that clarified, because that's what we brought up yesterday.
Did you hear that? Jean?
I did not, but I don't, I, I, I think Mr. Messner said something about that yesterday, but I don't quite understand what he means by the four out of five.
Read that in front of the commission. Jean, when you read that in four, as far as the commission, as far as materials, smoothness, look, the doors, four of the five that you read in the, in the ordinance and in historic, were met based on this new design. It was the fifth, which is the ornament terroristic, that was the only item that you, you guys felt that was not in compliance, of which we're trying to maintain as much as we can. Um, obviously hardy board, I cannot add wood to create some of that look to it, it's, it's there, and it, from a, from a dollar cost, hardy board does make that, some of those materials, but that would increase costs twenty to thirty thousand, and, and it's not in the budget, it's truly not in the budget. We could just paint the space and keep it, and stay in budget for our own, but, or I can go and upgrade it to a space that's gonna be a great look. You've seen me as what I've done at State Farm, I'm gonna make sure this building looks amazing.
And also to the point, when you say that these, what you talk about ornamental features, when was the last time that you bended that building? Because those ornamental features that you speak of, they are erratic. This is nothing that, that's salvageable. So that's, someone, like, you're, you're, you're talking about things that, they're gonna fall out, if we do nothing, those parts are gonna fall off.
Yeah, and I, I think though that what Jean is trying to do is take the, there was guidance given to them, uh, I believe by Mundeline, and they were trying to apply that to their decision. Now, we as the village board, and Vic, you can correct me if I'm wrong, we have a little more discretion, and we can look at it a little bit differently. Um, but then the question is, um, if we do that, what impacts does it have on other buildings, good or negative? Or do we have to do anything with our village code, um, if, if we make this decision tonight, Vic?
The, the village board does have discretion to apply its own judgment on these, uh, matters. Uh, I would note that the standards in the architectural, uh, review aspect of the village zoning code are, um, I don't wanna say that they are entirely subjective, but they are more qualitative than quantitative. And, and as a result, there is a subjectivity that can be imposed, and obviously, different people can have different takes on that. Um, so I, I think what is before you doesn't necessarily, if you were to agree with the petitioner, doesn't necessarily create any kind of rights to anybody else. Uh, it does certainly allow someone in the, in the future to say, well, we're gonna be much like this building. But again, location makes a difference, existing, uh, configurations of the buildings, the condition of an existing building, all of those things can factor into it. So if you have a building that has defined and well-maintained, uh, architectural features, to allow them to, to take it in the direction it's being proposed, may not be appropriate. But, and again, I, I will say that my eyes aren't so good, so I wouldn't be able to tell you how well or not they are maintained. Uh, but if, if these, uh, if the building is currently i- in a state of disrepair, that the existing architectural features cannot be, uh, preserved, and would have to be replicated, that, that's a different set of circumstances when, when applied. So I, I think that the, the standards are such that they can be adaptable from building to building, and they are available to be, um, considered more holistically than, uh, than rigidly.
Okay.
And there was a second motion that did yesterday, and that was Matt and Scott, the second motion is if there's something else that could be done, would they approve, which was unanimous, yes. And one of the questions, there was multiple board members for there, was can you add a third color? So that was not expressed in, in the recap, that Tim was, was up in the two, two motion requests, the first one based off the original, the second, if you can add more. We've commented we're adding more, we're adding the additional third color, which is gonna make it big improvement. We, cost-wise, we're ready to make this work. So we did provide that as some additional detail, I wanna make sure that, that, that's definitely coming, and you guys understand that.
I, I just have a couple of questions.
Given Jean's input. And you, your description is clean and sleek, which indeed is, this is obviously Victorian, quote, gingerbread. And in the details, have you considered, instead of, um, one of the buildings, maybe the center one, instead of hardy board, stucco? So that some of that gingerbread could, you know, rather than it being...
Yeah, center unit is gonna be that, that, that shaker.
Uh, oh, okay.
That's what I was gonna do, define the space, that your eye's gonna go to that, and then you'll have the different colors.
Okay.
We're trying this material that's gonna be, withstanding the weather or, or material. There's a stucco building that's there right now, it's, it's falling apart, it's, it's, it's falling off. That's the problem, you have the fixtures and different materials.
And the, the windows, do they...
The windows are staying there, those are all new windows that, uh, the prior owner put in, so we're maintaining the existing windows, and then we'll be re-trimming everything around it. And again, there's some flower boxes that are gonna still maintain them, that we're not gonna, we're not gonna get rid of, so those elements we're gonna try to keep.
Yeah.
Um, the copper roof that's on the second unit to the bridge is gonna, we're gonna try to maintain, there's some rock there that's coming off, so we're gonna see if we can try to recreate the structure there. Uh, the center window with the gray iron, we are keeping that. So we're trying to keep as much detail there, but we're gonna enhance it with the trim. Instead of having the corbels in some of the crown moldings, we'll, we'll make use of the materials that they offer through Hardy to, to utilize that.
That's too bad they don't have decorative stuff, they, they...
And we could do that.
... supply in the face of that kind of, that texture.
Yeah.
So...
I'm trying to formulate a question, and I'm, I'm, I...
Some difficulty.
And first of all, I'm wondering, are there, I can't find any buildings that have that, that corbels or any kind of decorative features.
There's a couple that have it. Um, the old landmark used to have it, and we did, they got rid of it.
Okay.
Julie Newman, he has a little band in, in the center between the, the first and second floor. Probably my office is probably the, the most detailed with it in, in the town with that Victorian type of look. Most of the spaces, it's not, it's, it's, it's color, texture.
I was, I was trying to think, has, has there ever been an intention of having that as, as a, a, a model for other buildings?
I think this is gonna create, or whatever it is.
I, I, I don't, I don't know if there's ever been a discussion of, well, I wanna reproduce that look somewhere else. I, I, I think...
So from the color scheme, give you guys a little history lesson, do you know why the, the colors are there?
I don't know.
Previous, when the board was going to create the commission, Terry Upton, out of vengeance, decided to paint all these colors. All the many colors he could choose, because the village was gonna create this ordinance.
He's like, I'll make these permanent.
So it was prior to the board approval that he painted the building and maintained those colors.
Well, I don't think it's the colors that are, I mean, the colors are obnoxious, in my...
Well, yeah.
But it's not in the space, but I think when you drive by, you see those colors, you're like, wow, um, not me, but there, there's a small percentage that, that appreciate it.
They don't get attention.
Not the attention we want, but yeah, the attention.
But I, I think the historical, or, I think what Jean is saying, correct me if I'm wrong, Jean, is the ornamentation is, is, um, critical to the gingerbread Victorian look, as opposed to this twenty-twenty-four.
Unfortunately, for a dollar and a cent, we can't do that, we could not keep that thing consistently, and I think that is...
What did we want?
I, if, well, even, I think we're gonna bring the terroristic still to have that charm of what we're wanting of the downtown, we're still gonna provide that. It's just not, that, that look right there, in my opinion, is not where we're headed, in, in the downtown. We're gonna revive this town, and it's gonna bring some new light to it. If you look at the new business in town, if you look at the landmark, if you look at the dance studio that had gone through major renovations, it's just the look they're, they're creating, is creating this new, it does, sometimes you gotta raise things to life.
Well, this, but really then it, it tends to really... Well, that, but really, then, it, it takes away the, I'm, I'm not criticizing it, just discussing it. It takes away the historical look and feel.
If this building was built in 1800s, I would agree with that. This building was built in 1961, this building is not, yeah, this building is not being-
And, and let me just jump right in right there. Exactly. It is exactly, it was built in the 1960s. So that is historically significant, and if you take a look at some of that trim, that is colonial revival, which was popular at that time. So these are character-defining features that you are stripping and not replacing. You are replacing it with, with boards, with trim, not with ornamental trim. And the guidelines, the guidelines specifically say that the eclectic feel of existing buildings in the historic business should be varied to the architectural style, particularly with contiguous buildings. And sides should be emphasized, architectural design elements should be emphasized, thoughtfully integrate ornamentation into the overall building design. So that was the decision that was made last night. If you, I understand, if you are, you know, considering different criteria, that's fine. I just don't want the message to be any different than what was delivered last night. And that was a very clear decision.
I was there when I went to Gene, but-
That's, that's-
But, but she's talking sideways. How can we say that they said no, and they said yes on the other thing, and now she's not even acknowledging that they said yes on the other?
So Gene-
Again, that, that, that need to speak truth.
So, Gene, Gene, thanks for your thoughts. I, I'll just go around the room here again. Does this change any of your opinions on should we approve this or not approve this?
And I might note, because this would involve a partial reversal of the architectural commission, it does require four yes votes among the trustees, and you don't have an opportunity to vote in that regard.
Okay. All right, so-
I, 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 I would like to honor Gene's opinion. But I'm on my practical side, so, my practical side wants to see a new look, a clean look downtown, and this might, I, I think be the beginning of, of that invasion for others to join.
All right, thank you for that, Kent.
I can't say it any better than Bobby does. I agree with her thoughts.
All right.
She wants to sit in here, does she?
Thank you.
You know, my understanding is, I, I know that we are looking for historic and architecture concerns, but the business perspective, how the look of the property is also important. So modifications are necessary for the historic aspect to run the business as well. So I think, you know, if I be given a choice to vote, I will vote against it because as the architectural commission and the, you know, side by the business.
Okay, thank you for that. Rita, it's up to you.
No.
I'm told I can't vote, I'm not worthy.
No, no. Chris didn't want to vote, is that right?
He can't, he can't.
He's, he's participating, but he's not able to-
He's not able to vote.
That's what I'm saying.
Right, so the four of you in, in attendance will have to make that decision.
Exactly.
I, I think that if, and I, I just have to say this out loud, so I figure out, I guess we're on the same side. I, I think that the, the Gene is saying that if this could be restored-
It can.
And I know, I, I understand, and beautified, you know, the, so we don't have to rub and say blue and-
And, and nothing there is beautiful.
I, I don't disagree with that. I don't disagree with that. I, I'm not going to say no. You know, we, we need to clean up the, the downtown. I, I hate to do it at the expense of the character, that there is that here, and it, and it was at one time.
So I, just, you know, I have three brands that have leases right now, and this is based on conceptual. We have, that's the one issue we have in downtown. I can also tell you because I've got other property owners in town now, starting to pay attention to what Dave and I are doing, because the, the, all the town needs to change. No, we make the change and, and people will come. It's, it's creating this positive buzz.
What's your biggest complaint right now?
Well, we're studying-
Your biggest complaint is that vacant buildings.
Oh, I thought you meant-
No, my, I mean, no, biggest complaint is-
I'm just saying, it's horrible.
No, no, anyone that, if anyone comes into town, they talk about vacant buildings.
I got a bad back, that's my biggest complaint.
We're trying, we're trying to solve that problem.
No, I understand, I understand.
But, you know, so that's the challenge.
I, I understand. I, I just think it's, it's, you know, it would be nice to put, to, to make it look like a restored gingerbread front. I don't like the best precedents that landmarks began, I guess. And, and it needs beautification. We need the, we need the shelves, obviously. I think, you know, and, and since I don't have the money, and maybe there's grant money out there, and you don't have the time for it, I just, I understand. So, I'm not, I, I felt a little behind.
Somebody want to make a motion? Uh, what, how does a motion work here?
It'd be a motion to reverse the architectural commission with respect to the partial denial.
Okay.
I would still move.
And fix that, yes.
Yes.
Trustee O'Reilly moved.
Second.
Second by trustee Tenurji, roll call.
Trustee O'Reilly.
Hi.
Trustee Tenurji.
Hi.
Trustee Jamil.
Hi.
Trustee O'Connell.
Okay, motion carried.
Oh.
Did you say, I thought you said, I thought you said yes.
I'm a leader.
I thought you said yes.
I don't use my mouth, so.
You said yes?
I mostly, how's that, does that-
No, you guys say yes.
That's fair enough.
All right. Motion, now it's carried? Okay, thank you.
I'll invite you guys all to finish product. You guys will be very impressed with the finished product. I have one.
There is a big question left, you know, but now we're talking sprinklers.
Yeah, so I have a big bit, is-
That's the challenge.
We're going to answer the discussion with the fire department to find out if their plug-ins, is it require the same fire quality? We're, we're, we're still in consideration on that in unit three. I'll let you guys know as we have it. Because we've got it, so a lot, two of the businesses are longer residents, so you got to tell that. So we're bringing residents out, which is actually exciting, because it's going to bring another vibe. So they're all new businesses, not just somebody in town, it's all new businesses. The three of the businesses are, are, are coming in, are, are, so we're, we're tight. It could be, and it could be nice to carry on it as well, and it'll help the, the, the parts of the town. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Village Engineers report. Jeffrey, you still here?
All right, yes, I am still here. So, here, sorry about earlier, my flight was delayed getting back into town, so I was just getting into town, so sorry about that. But anyway, the engineers reports in the board packet. Not a lot of updates, but here are a couple. The village hall expansion, I talked earlier about Carmichael Construction doing the peers, and I will have their schedule here in the next day or two. The actual village hall expansion, and I don't know if Matt Bickel is still in the room or not, but with Bear Construction, they're shooting for the week of March 11th for a pre-construction meeting. So exact date and time TBD on that. Road program is moving along as this was a, direction was given last week. Aptikisak Road just wanted to clarify, the main contract work is in, shut down for the winter, but every once in a while, you'll see Nikor out there still working on their utility relocations. So that's all of the, the updates I had. If there's any questions, happy to take those.
Any questions?
I understood that the peers will be poured next week by Carmichael?
Yeah, that's, that's what they were tentatively shooting for. I'll, I'll have the final schedule here later this week.
And then it takes four weeks to, oh, here we go. So we, we should, it should be ready for the barn by the first week of April.
Correct.
And, do we have arrangements made for the movement of the barn?
Yep, working with Devoot on that.
Can I just, if, if they're going to be pouring the peers next week, will the tour be able to get back to the school, and will that be possible, or is there going to be construction issues going on?
Did you hear that, Jeff?
No, the peer of, construction will not impact access or anything with the barn.
No, but also the schoolhouse, the schoolhouse, the schoolhouse.
No, no, it'll be beside. They're not going to be using the footbridge or anything like that, so people will still be able to walk into the school, unless-
How, how are they, how are they doing the footings? Are they, do they bring a tractor back there? They dig them out by hand? How do they do that?
Uh, they're going to put timber mats over the wetland, drive over those, and they'll auger the foundation piers.
Oh, okay. Okay, they'll auger, and then they'll, they'll, what, they'll wheelbarrow cement in there or something, or concrete, or whatever you call it?
Talked to Carmichael about that probably, because the timber mats probably not going to support a loaded concrete truck.
So if schoolchildren, maybe 20 or 30 at a time, are going to be at the schoolhouse, they'll still be able to do that, you think?
Uh, is the access just for them to walk from, you know, the bridge into the school and back? They're not using that open area, are they, to the east?
We were hoping so.
You, they were hoping to? The open area by, by the side of the schoolhouse?
Yes.
Okay.
It was part of the program, it's been reset of that era, playing games with that era.
Ah, they're going to do-
You're, you're going to do that Tuesday again.
Tuesday and Wednesday.
And Wednesday.
We're doing, we're actually, they were going to do it in four days, and now we figured out, Amy's helping, so we're doing tag, so we're going to do two classes each day.
So Tuesday, Wednesday, Jeff, is that a problem?
Okay, got it. Yeah, I can push Carmichael to Thursday, Friday.
Okay. Good. All right, thank you. Anything else? All right, let's keep, keep us moving, right? So the village president trustee reports. The only thing I just wanted to report on was, although maybe not everything in the governor's budget is good, one thing that is good is that they did put funding in there for the master plan for the Route 53 quarter to the tune of a million dollars, so the study can be done. That's pretty big news. That's great news.
Yeah, if, if the rest of it wasn't so horrendous, it would be lovely.
Yes, understand. Yep.
Rest of what?
So, so-
So 250 million that's going to the legal language, yes, that's what I meant.
And, and the only other thing that we do need to do is to fill out witness slips, whatever, once we get the information on the, they're going to eliminate the grocery tax, right? The 1% grocery tax.
The sales tax on groceries, yeah.
Grocery, so we'll be asking for help on that, just write our legislators, so. It's something you said, Art.
A little parent loss that make us whole, right?
Right, yeah. So we'll work through that. Trustee Borowski, you're here, do you have anything that you want to report on?
No, sir, thank you for allowing me to speak, but no, sir.
All right, thank you for being here. Uh, trustee Jamil?
Yeah, I want to bring up a thing which happened in the village hall, which is out on the social media. I want to get a clarity from the president officially and the manager as to what happened. And as a trustee, I would like to know what was that visit for, and how was the response? And is there any remedial or corrective actions, or, you know, was it significant?
So, so maybe what, so-
One visit of somebody asking for a document. And as seen by everybody in the public as well, the video circulating on social media, and it was reported to him to go online for everything he was asking. So as a trustee, myself sometimes find it difficult to go on the website to know about the budget and other things. So if it was a way to print out the documents he was asking, or to come back again, that have been a solution, instead of repeating the same answer. I want to know officially what happened, and what was the circumstances, and how was the response? Was it accurate or inaccurate?
Okay, so how do we want to do this? So first off, there's a, a group of people out there that are calling themselves like FOIA officers, and they're, they're, you know, going into village halls, and one of the things that they've been looking for is the posting of certain documents, which I showed you the picture of, and it's now on our wall over there. They came into the village, you know, Dana tried to answer the questions, you know, he did the best he could, told them to fill out the FOIA form, even tried to get information from Vic, he's asking for other stuff, I don't know what that is. And it turns out that, you know, we were missing some information that we should have had posted there, and it was just not clear, no one was 100% familiar with that policy, because when was that law passed, 19?
Uh, the posting requirement's been up since 1983, and my suspicion is that when the village migrated everything from paper to online, those things were removed from bulletin boards because they were now online. And I, I don't know if that's the case or when that happened, but it seems like that's a logical thing, since it had been a longstanding rule. And I think that the, in, in the effort to modernize, there may have been an oversight as to the specific statutory requirement that that has to be physically posted.
So, uh, so actually, Nicole actually did a FOIA refresher like the day before that, and she was actually told in the training that the interpretation is so that it is okay to just have it online.
But she was actually told in-
In training that even though it says, you know, that, that you're not going to be, you know-
Well, and, and I, I think, I think in the communication that I, I had had, I had mentioned that the village was in substantial compliance.
Yeah.
Um, and the reason is that the attorney general has not found that the failure to post is a material violation of Open Meetings Act or FOIA. That was actually a FOIA requirement, and so there is still a perhaps antiquated provision in the FOIA law to have a physical posting, even if there's a requirement on the website. But again, as I understand, and I guess what, what Dana just relayed is confirming of that, is that that's not a, that's not viewed as a material violation, rather, it's a, still within substantial compliance if it's on the website. But we are now meeting the express letter of the law, and, you know, in that regard, our FOIA auditor friend was good enough to highlight that, and we addressed it, you know, I think that was on a late Thursday afternoon, and before the weekend was out, that had been corrected.
But so to get some more detail, what this person does is fix this, you know, this small part of FOIA, not a significant, you know, thing.
But not as legal.
Marty?
What he's doing is not as legal.
No, no, not at all, and-
And including the video of, videoing of it, which I have no problem with, which I, you know, no problem with him videoing it, I was, you know, courteous and respectful. You can watch, you know, the video of me, you know, dealing with him, that I listened to him and answered his questions. As I said, I, you know, told him that, you know, I understand what you're saying.
My understanding of this is that-
Is that we are only required to have it online. I even confirmed with the attorneys that I understand what you're saying. Our understanding is that, you know, is that we're in compliance by having it online. You know, I said, I'm happy to, you know, to give you the FOIA request form for any documents you like. But what he does is he, you know-
Goes around to check on that part of the FOIA law. Um, you know, he's not testing, you know, much more, I think, um, you know, detailed parts of FOIA, you know, that would be probably, um, you know, more important to test that we are in compliance on, but he checks that part of it to see if we are, to see if it's posted there when you walk in. He did fill out a FOIA request for some other documents, which when we provided him with all those documents, we did actually update the board, we posted it, Bill said those things in compliance, we sent pictures of that, and he actually called, and, you know, thanked us for that, and he asked, you know, why we did that, and I said, you know, as
I told him, I said, you know, that I did believe we were in, you know, compliance originally, but we did not have a problem with going, you know, the extra mile and coming more in compliance with that, you know, that it was not a problem to come in more full compliance, like he asked, that it was, we were never trying to be non-compliant. It was just our understanding that, you know, what we were doing was, was fine, but we were happy, you know, if he thought we should do more, we were happy to do more. It was not a hard task to, you know, to put that information up.
There's a bunch of other videos up there, too, so if you want to watch other municipality dealings, we're not alone, so.
I did.
dealings, we're not alone, so. I did.
So now we're good. Whoever you want to interpret it, we're fine going forward.
Did you, that answer your question?
Yes.
Anything else? All right. Trustee O'Connor? Trustee O'Reilly? Trustee Tanucci? Village interim manager, Austin?
Again, thank you for your appreciation showing me. I enjoyed helping with the transition. One, if you have any questions on the budget report, I mean, on the manager's report, let me know. I'll still be here. I think Monday morning, I'll have the transition with Chris for a couple hours or so and that'll do it. Just so you know, the budget workshop, Chris is going to reschedule that because there are not enough people that can, not enough trustees can make it, so we'll work that out, or Chris will work that out and we'll get that budget workshop going. So those are the two big things really are the budget and the securing, the planning and the code services for the village, that Chris is going to be hard at with the very able assistance of Dana. So again, thank you all very much.
It's like I mentioned, like the little things, the way you said it, like these two little things.
Immediate things.
So again, Art, thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, appreciate it.
Thank you.
And I bet you didn't expect to have, yeah, I bet you didn't expect to have an MRI tonight.
You'll always remember your last word, man, with a-
Yeah, it was, it was, yeah, it was exciting. Yeah, it was exciting. That's the worst.
So with that, can I have a motion to adjourn? Who by trustee O'Reilly, second by, by trustee O'Connor, all in favor? Motion carried, meeting adjourned. Good night, everyone.
Cuba Road is closed too. There's a-
Good night, Chris. Thank you for joining.